We are live and recording.
Okay, good afternoon, everyone. It is about 2:43 PM on Tuesday, the 25th. Welcome to our Board of County Commissioners Land Use Meeting and Public Hearing. If you'll all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Attorney Garcia, do we have certification of today's agenda?
You do. The county attorney's office reviewed the agenda, and the board has jurisdiction over all matters, and where such matters as appropriate, notice has been given.
Thank you, Attorney Garcia. And do any commissioners have disclosures for items on this agenda today?
I have none, thank you.
No, sir.
And I have none either. So with that, we'll move on to item two, which is our land use meeting, public hearing, agenda items. And we have received a request that we know there is at least one individual who has shown up to testify that has some additional needs. We want to make sure that we're accommodating that. And we've been asked to move up Agenda Item H, which is the Fields Preliminary Plan, project file SB 2022-036, up to the top of the agenda. I'll ask my board if we're comfortable doing that.
You bet.
Commissioner Thomas, you okay with moving that up?
Yes, I thought I had to be already. Thank you.
Okay, great. So with that, we will move up Agenda Item H to the top. Again, it's Fields Preliminary Plan, project file SB 2022-036. Heather Scott, Principal Planner from the Department of Community Development, presenting for staff. Hi, Heather.
Hi. Good afternoon, commissioners. Heather Scott, representing Planning Services. The item before you is the Fields Preliminary Plan. Project number is SB 2022-036. Jill Repella with Cornerstone Insight is here on behalf of the owner. The applicant is requesting approval on a preliminary plan to subdivide 638 acres into 255 lots and 13 tracks. The 247 clustered lots range from 12,599 to 27,272 square feet in size. The eight 35-plus acre parcels range from 35 acres to 56 acres. As part of the preliminary plan, two waivers from the Estate Residential Zone District requirements are also requested relative to the eight large lots. One is from the requirements of central water service, and the other is for underground electrical distribution lines. The intent of the preliminary plan process is provided on this slide. The preliminary plan process begins with the submittal of an application. The request is forwarded to the referral agencies and abutting landowners for comment and input. Staff further analyzes the request, and the applicant is provided the opportunity to address any issues identified through the referral process. Public notice is provided, and the request is heard by the Planning Commission prior to consideration to the Board of County Commissioners. During the process, staff receives several public comments. Citizens expressed concerns regarding the overall site design, size of lots, density, access, and traffic. The applicants met with individual neighbors to discuss concerns. The applicants are prepared to provide greater description of community outreach during their presentation. Referral responses are included in the staff report. Public Works Engineering and Mile High Flood Control District provided several comments regarding the floodplain and drainage channels that traverse this site and requested additional studies to evaluate the conditions of the channels and appropriate setbacks to residential lots. As of April 14th, additional information from the applicant's environmental consultants were provided, and Engineering has confirmed that its concerns have been addressed relative to the preliminary plan design. The Planning Commission heard the proposal at a public hearing on April 17th. Numerous citizens spoke against the application, stating concerns over overall density, small lot sizes, traffic issues, and then the impact to the quality of the rural lifestyle and community character. Planning Commission asked the applicant clarifying questions regarding small lot sizes, traffic, and the impact to the quality of life. The applicant explained how the proposal meets the requirements of the Estate Residential Zone District and the need to cluster lots for public water and sewer. The Commission unanimously approved a motion to recommend approval of the two zoning resolution waiver requests. A motion to recommend denial of the preliminary plan request was made, failing by a vote of three in favor and three against. As a result, the preliminary plan moves forward to the board with no recommendation from the Planning Commission. Those commissioners voting to recommend denial of the preliminary plan cited noncompliance with the approval standard 403.01, Conformance with the Community Master Plan, Comprehensive Master Plan, stating that smaller sizes were not compatible to the surrounding area. The site is identified by the red star, is located in the northeast portion of the county between Hilltop Road and Flintwood Road, north of Singing Hills Road. The site shown in the red outline is zoned estate residential. Zooming in on the aerial, the site abuts Tallman Gulch subdivision to the west and the Hidden Village subdivision to the south and southwest. There are rural residential neighborhoods to the north and agricultural zone properties to the east. The property was zoned agriculture with the inception of zoning in Douglas County in 1955. The property owners rezoned to a state residential in March of 2022. This exhibit shows the proposed subdivision designed per the ER Zone District standards. The clustered homes are located on the western portion of the site. Open space planning areas OS 1 through OS 7 surrounds the clustered residential area, preserving wildlife habitat and natural features, including the four tributaries found on site. The open space provides a buffer to the larger lots to the west. Access is proposed from two points along Hilltop Road, one along the northwest side, and one at the future roundabout of Hilltop Road and Singing Hills Road. A temporary access point will be provided north of the roundabout until construction is completed. Seven of the 35-plus acre lots will take driveways directly off Flintwood Road, and one 35-plus acre parcel will take access off of Hilltop Road. Envelopes or no-build zones may be established for these lots as part of the final plat process. Seven of the tracks are for open space and utility purposes. Two tracks are for Parker Water and Sanitation District utility sites. Three tracks are for the metro district, and one is a four-acre parcel for a public park. Drainage easements are proposed along the four tributaries that run through this site. Additional studies will be submitted with the final plat application. The county will accept general-purpose utility easements and secondary drainage easements via that final plat. Following our site photos, this view looks east from Hilltop Road. This view looks north from Singing Hills Road through the middle of the site. This view looks northwest through the site from Singing Hills Road and Flintwood Road. This view looks west from the site at the intersection of Flintwood Road and Shunah Trail. Zoning resolution waivers shall be approved by the board only upon finding, based on evidence presented in each specific case, that the approval standards listed on this slide are met. A detailed discussion of these standards is provided within the staff report. Staff has evaluated the waiver requests in accordance with Section 122 of the Douglas County zoning resolution. Should the board find that the approval standards for the waivers are met, a motion should be made prior to the preliminary plan recommendation. No conditions are proposed by staff for these waivers. Section 122 of the zoning resolution sets forth the parameters for the Board of County Commissioners' decision on waiver requests, as noted. The approval standards for the preliminary plan requests are set forth in Section 403 of the subdivision resolution and are listed on this slide. Staff's assessment of the approval standards are discussed within detail in the staff report. With additional correspondence provided by the applicant and by Public Works Engineering on Friday, April 14th, Engineering has confirmed that it has sufficient information necessary to assess approval standards 40302, 40305, and 40306. Continued conformance with these standards will be verified with final engineering plans and studies to be reviewed as part of the final plat application. Staff has evaluated the preliminary plan in accordance with Article 4 of the Douglas County subdivision resolution. Should the Board of County Commissioners find that the approval standards for the preliminary plan are met, the following proposed conditions should be considered for inclusion in the motion. Condition number one, prior to board action on the final plat, the applicant shall demonstrate compliance with South Metro Fire Rescue Authority's approval requirements as provided in their letter dated March 28th, 2023. Condition two, prior to recordation of the final plat for the eight large lots, existing well number 126985-A shall be capped or abandoned or a court-approved augmentation plan obtained per the requirements of the Colorado Division of Water Resources. Condition number three, prior to recordation of the final plat, the applicant shall provide required cash-in-lu-of parkland dedication fees to Douglas County in accordance with Article 10 of the Douglas County subdivision resolution. Condition four, prior to recordation of the final plat, cash-in-lu-of school and land dedication fees will be paid to Douglas County School District in accordance with Article 10 of the Douglas County subdivision resolution. The board may consider deferring this payment to the issuance of the first residential building permit if approved by the Douglas County School District. Condition five, prior to recordation of the final plat, the applicant will record a declaration of restrictive covenants reserving the water rights beneath that portion of the subdivision that is not within the bounds of Parker Water and Sanitation District for the future landowners. Condition number six, during construction activities within the development, the applicant, its successors, and assigns shall take all reasonable care to watch for historic resources, paleontological resources, and other cultural history resources, and shall immediately notify Douglas County and complete appropriate Colorado Office of Archaeology and Historic Preservation data management forms in the event of such discovery. And condition number seven, technical corrections to record copy of the preliminary plan exhibit shall be made to the satisfaction of Douglas County. We'd like to read into record an eighth condition that anything that the applicant says hereto today and agrees to will be put on the final plat. Section 40508 of the subdivision resolution sets forth the parameters for the board's evaluation of the preliminary plan request, as noted on this slide. This concludes staff's presentation. I am available to answer any questions you have. Otherwise, the applicant Jill Repella is here, and she has a presentation as well.
Heather, thank you for that presentation. Any questions for staff?
I have a couple of questions for the county attorney.
Okay.
So, Mr. Garcia, I understand that we should do two motions in context with the waivers before we do the official motion for the project, if we choose to do so. I don't see those motions in our motion log. Am I missing those? Maybe I am.
You are not. I believe those are missing.
Okay, if you could craft those for us during this hearing in case we do need those. And my second question is, condition number four has some language that if the school district waives the fees until the first building permit is issued, so how would we handle this? If we choose to have the builder pay the cash-in-lu earlier, or if we're going to delay that? How would we handle that?
I don't know that it needs to be addressed. I don't know that it needs to be addressed at this meeting, but we would be able to make a recommendation to them based on that at a later date.
So the board would have the opportunity to make a ruling on that later on, is what you're saying?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. I have no other questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Further questions for staff?
I do. So Heather, walk me through. We've got, in order to, right now, this this application is the opinion of the staff that it's not fully in compliance with our development standards. And prior to, you know, were we to want to move forward with the preliminary plan, we have to issue two waivers. But it seemed to me, if I'm reading the staff report properly, those two waivers pertain to the eight 35-acre lots that are on this development. Am I getting that right or not?
The waivers are pertaining to the eight lots only.
Okay.
So yes, the staff's determination that there was still some information missing, I believe, is more regarding the engineering issues and the drainage through the site. But as of April 14th, the applicant did provide enough information that Engineering felt confident. They met the obligations for the preliminary plan. If this were to be approved, there is a final plat process that has to go through.
Okay, and so it's that final plat process that those engineering concerns brought out here in the staff report would need to be truly finalized?
Correct.
Okay, and so then let's talk about the waivers for the eight larger lots. Help me out with the one, there are two. And if the chair will give me a moment here, I want to make sure I get this right.
That's fine.
Okay, so those eight 35-acre-plus residential lots are proposed to be served by individual wells. Now, that strikes me, that's in compliance. If we were, if this was just, if the decision before the board was the preliminary plan for those eight individual lots, they're of a size that serviced by well water would be appropriate. Yeah, no?
Typically, 35-plus acre parcels, yes, are served by well. This property was rezoned to estate residential. Estate residential requires that all lots be served by public water. So that's the waiver request. It's not for the entirety of the subdivision. The clustered lots would meet that requirement, as they are now annexed into Parker Water and Sand. And I think the applicant will talk more about this, but Parker Water and Sand was not interested in working on those 35-acre parcels, and hence the request for just those larger lots to stay on well and septic, or to use well and septic.
Okay. And then the second waiver for the eight larger lots, all public utility distribution lines shall be placed underground. So the, and I guess I didn't pick that up, pick up on this when we were shown the pictures of the site, but the plan would be that the utility, the utilities, which I would assume would be electrical and, you know, telephone, any kind of internet or anything, those will still, those will be placed on poles?
So the existing power that's out there on site would remain on poles? Anything new would be buried? So again, this is a partial waiver request for the seven large lots off of Flintwood to not bury the existing lines.
Okay, because the existing state is the power is up in the air on poles?
Correct.
Okay. I might, I might ask the applicant, why are we doing it this way? This doesn't, although the reality is sometimes we get difficult things before the board, so. I think that's all my questions for staff.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Teal. With that, I'll ask the applicant to make its presentation.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Jill Repella, R-E-P-E-L-L-A, address 8678 Concord Center Drive. It's good to see you today. I would like to, we're looking forward to presenting our preliminary plan. We're very excited about this project. There are some components of it that are unique, but you'll understand by the end of the presentation why we did what we did. I would like to introduce the Walden family here, Sharon Walden and her sisters. They're here today, too. We have our engineering team, Troy Bales, Robert Fitch, and with Rick Engineering, and we have Rich Fulmer with Felsberg FHU, if there's any questions on the transportation study. We have a lot of important information that we want to share today, so we'll go ahead and get started with the PowerPoint. We're here, too, for the preliminary plan, for the approval request, and this is under the subdivision resolution, the approval standards under subdivision. We put together our project priorities, and obviously, the first one is to meet the approval standards under Section 403. The comp plan was evaluated during the zoning approval, and we believe we are consistent with the comp plan, and I have some information to share with you on that. One of the primary goals for us in this part of the county was water. With the Waldens having owned this property for over 80 years, they have a very heightened sensitivity to the groundwater and their surrounding neighbors, who are all on well and septic, with the exception of the Tallman community. We wanted to put a water conservation plan in place for the efficient use of water, and we want to continue the farming and ranching opportunities. That's the heritage of the Walden family, and that, again, those opportunities can happen on the eight large lots. So we had our zoning approved last March of 2022. Total property size, 639 acres. Estate residential allows for a gross density of one dwelling unit per 2.5 acres. We meet that gross density, so this property allows us to build 255 lots. This is the location. Is the pointer, oh, good, the pointer's working. So this is the location, and there's a couple of things I really want to point out here on this, and we'll go over it a couple more times, because it's important to understand. The property to the north, Windy Hills, this was a meets and bounds back in 1960, when these lots were divided. They're all on well and septic. These are up to 35-acre lots in size, and they're all on well and septic. Hidden Village to the south and part of the southwest corner, they are all on well and septic. The only community that is not on well is the Tallman community right here, but they are on septic systems. This is Hilltop Road. This is Singing Hills. This is going to be a county road project, an improvement project. So I just wanted to orient you to that. On this property, you'll notice here on the aerial, very, very heavy vegetation. These are very large stands of beautiful pine trees through back through here. A lot of drainage ways through here, and what you see in the land, it looks like a scar on the land, that's the Walden's wheat fields. They've been working and farming this property for decades. So these are the wheat fields, and this was the area that we felt was most appropriate to locate the clustered homes. Here you can see the way our preliminary plan lays out right on the clustered homes. And this is just another way to depict it. What you're seeing here in the white is the Walden property dedicating 42 acres to the county for this road improvement. That's a significant amount of property for them to be dedicating it. In the light green, see these light lines? These are the eight large lots. And what we wanted to do is to buffer these eight large lots around the properties that are on wells. And again, the property adjacent here, they are on Parker Water and Sand water, but septic systems. We meet the, the design elements, Section 404. This is where it goes into the lot sizes, the geotechnical details, buffering the surrounding lands, making sure the street and stormwater and drainage will meet the Douglas County regulations, natural drainage grading, vegetation are preserved and integrated into the subdivision. I will highlight on this one, of the 639 acres, 490 acres will remain natural. It's 160 acres of the open space around the cluster and approximately 332 acres of the large lots. Significant archaeological and historic resources will be protected, provide safe, convenient park, road, and trail system. I will highlight, of those properties surrounding this, with the exception of Tallman, no other community around this has open space. Tallman does, but that's a very small section, and we're hoping that we can connect our trail system to a Tallman trail system. But there's very little open space out in this area for the public to access. And technical reports have been provided. So these are the design elements related to the approval standards. Here's some photos, and I want to focus on, again, the wheat fields versus the very large pine trees in the back. The pine trees, again, are going to be a part of the large lots. And you can see the Walden family's barns and silo and home is located right here. Here's just a different perspective that shows the wheat fields. There will be no natural disturbance of any natural vegetation there. We wanted to preserve the pine trees and buffer the surrounding community that are all on wells. So all these things that I'm pointing out is what was driving us to the plan that we ended up with today. So I'm going to focus on the clustered lots first. Again, they're located in the wheat fields, has minimal disturbance to the land. It's adjacent to similar clustered lots here in Tallman. It's adjacent to the road and the infrastructure. It's adjacent to Parker Water and Sanitation infrastructure. The lots, these lot sizes support water conservation. It includes 160 acres in this area, and there has been a Fields Metro District established, and it was established last May of 2022. The metro district encompasses the The Metro District encompasses the clustered lots. The Metro District does not encompass the large lots. So we have open space buffers here that I want to touch on. The residential buffer between, so this is Tallman. We mimicked and matched their buffer there, and we worked within the natural terrain. We had drainage ways that we need to work in here, too. The shortest distance here is 470 feet. The longest distance is over 1,000 feet. That's three football fields. We buffered with consistent adjacent lots, and it doubles, basically, it doubles the open space of what is currently there. Right now, it's just this. It will double that open space there. This is a view from the closest lot line to the nearest neighbor. I want to talk about the water supplies and the approval standards for the clustered lots. Parker Water and Sand will provide water and sewer services. We had an inclusion agreement approved January 2023. The lots in the open space, this area here, is the area that we included into Parker Water and Sanitation District, not the whole property. This area is included. We have a commitment to water conservation plan. We're working with Parker Water and Sanitation on that. That was a requirement for our inclusion, and we had no problem with that. We believe it's the right thing to do. We have a restrictive covenant that we will put on all the entire property that the water can only serve the residents on the property. Parker Water and Sand also required a restrictive covenant on the groundwater for this area. So we are encumbered by two restrictive covenants. This water on this property will only go to serve these, these homes. And the connection points to water and sewer are these locations, waters here. I have something I would like to put in the record that came up during planning commission. Parker Water and Sanitation District has a policy, they will not, not serve water without sewer. They understand the value of the return flows and the reuse of that. The Tallman community adjacent to us is not serving, Parker is not serving sewer. That was an old policy, and they won't do that again. These homes are on septic systems. And I want to highlight the lot sizes of these homes. You cannot have a septic system on a lot smaller than one acre. That's why these lot sizes are larger. They're all on septic. So I want to provide you with that policy, but I also want to provide you with our addendum with Parker Water and Sanitation District that shows our commitment to a water conservation plan. So if I...
You can approach our county attorney. Thanks, Ms. Repella.
So the clustered lots, again, has 160 acres of open space, a four-acre park, trails...
I'm just going to pause you so our attorney can enter these as exhibits.
Hello.
Thank you. Cool.
Thank you.
These will be marked as Exhibit 1 and 2 for the Fields preliminary plan. Thank you, Attorney Garcia. Ms. Repella?
Thank you. So just to recap, open space will be 160 acres of open space surrounding the clusters. We wanted to ensure that every home was on open space to loosen up the way this, these lots laid out and to give it an open feel. We have trails, parks, overlook buffers, monuments, and drainage. It'll be owned and maintained by Metro District in coordination with an HOA. And again, the lots are adjacent to open space. Now I want to talk about the large lots. This is the Waldens' barns and silos, and these are, when you get into the property, these are the pine trees. It's beautiful property up there. We didn't want to disturb it. And fortunately, it laid out in a way that it was adjacent to where all of the wells were. And so it made sense to leave that as is, so there will only be eight homes here. This lot is probably the largest one. I believe it's 52 acres in size. But they're all, none of them are smaller than 35 acres at this point. The, we, these lots will allow for continued ranching. Estate residential allows ranching and farming, and it's all based on the size of the property. And considering these are pretty significant-sized lots, under the estate residential, the allowed use under ranching and farming, we wanted to preserve that. That is in honor of the Walden family. It protects the surrounding alluvial wells, provides a nice buffer to the larger lots around the perimeter. It also provides for the visual openness. I'd mentioned before that 490 acres of this property will remain natural. That's a significant portion of this, this property. Did I say all that? Historic structures, and you saw in the photos. What we will do is make sure that we evaluate the historic structures for their structural integrity and preserve the ones that can be. The well and septic provides a significant buffer, stating that the individual properties here are only going to use one acre foot per year. That's how it's preserving that groundwater for the surrounding wells. Again, has the restrictive covenant on it. We have an approved traffic study, and again, all this white here, that's property that the Waldens will be providing to the county for all these road improvements. Right here, I want to highlight, Singing Hills goes right along the property line, this thin line here. The proposed county road improvement is to actually relocate Singing Hills up onto the Walden property. There is a giant gas line that goes through here, and they needed a leapfrog over that. So the properties here to the south are going to end up with a pretty significant strip of land that moves the road further away from their homes. So this, we're talking about the drainage ways. You can kind of see the natural drainages through here. We try to preserve those as much as possible. Two regional detention ponds, and the drainage facility comply with the Douglas County and Mile High Flood District regulations. And the initial review, as stated earlier by staff, that the, it has been reviewed, the preliminary drainage studies, and that we will go into more detail at final plat. Other services, South Metro Fire Rescue. Because these are large lots, getting water, central water to them, that's part of the waiver. We were, South Metro Fire, we're treating these more like agricultural lots. One thing that came from this that is a benefit to the surrounding area, there are no fire hydrants out here to serve these other existing properties. We are going to be putting a fire hydrant here that will serve all the properties in the area because there is no fire hydrant to fill the cisterns and the, and the water trucks. So that was, oops, that was a commitment that we had on these. Core Electric, all new facilities will be located underground, so most, most of the new facilities are all here. There is a line along Flintwood. It's an existing line. It's serving all the homes in the area. We're not going to touch that because there would be quite a bit of disruption to do anything with that. And there are only seven lots here. It'd be a significant cost, seven lots, to bury a line and cause disruption to the area. Core has agreed that they would maintain and service those, and they're comfortable with those maintaining as they, as existing. Douglas County Sheriff's Office will serve, as well as the Douglas County School District. Regarding the school district, dedication of school fees, the school district has already provided a letter that they are comfortable and they have no objective to receiving the payment, cash, and low fees upon the first building permit. So we already have their permission to do that. Community outreach. Sharon and I met with a lot of people, one-on-one. We left notes on doors. We met in their kitchens. We spent a lot of time with individuals, and we were always, always made ourselves available. We, I had probably well over 30 individual phone calls. Many people who sent referral responses during the referral process, I reached out and called them. There are many people, for example, in the Franktown area, they're very organized, related to groundwater. When they understood our water plan, they couldn't have been happier with how we are doing this responsible water management. We had community meetings, and we followed up on the referral emails. The feedback, when people didn't understand the water plan, they had feedback on it, but when they understand it, they thank us. Traffic, we explained to them how the county's going to be moving forward and doing the road improvements. Lot sizes has been brought up. Buffers, we already explained the buffers and the rural lifestyle. Our project schedule is, we're hoping to do final plat next year. Late 2024, we begin construction. Late 2025, hopefully, the first home occupancy, and then full build-out 2030. Partial waiver request. Those large lots, Parker has expressed they were not interested in serving, they do not serve municipal water to large lots like that. And so they, they wanted us to make sure that we did not include that in their service area. And it made sense. So here, they're adverse to serving municipal 35-acre lots. They just, that's just not what they do. So the large lots will be served by the individual wells and septic, and each one of those lots, one acre foot a year. The other waiver request, as I explained before, was for the core. The existing core electric utility lines will remain. All other new utility lines and electric lines and other service lines will be buried. So these are only partial waiver requests specific to the large lots. Approval standards. Section 403, the subdivision resolution. Conform with the comp plan's policies. Again, our, we had an evaluation of the comp plan policies during zoning, which was determined that we met with those comp plan policies. Address the design elements, as I mentioned in Section 404. We believe we've done that. 18A water supply, not only do we think that we met the 18A water supply, we went over and above and offered something that no other community in this part of the county has done. Waste, water collection system, again, the Parker Water and Sand, and then the septic for the large lots. And then we identified the areas of, the geotechnical study was accepted. Adequate drainage, again, the initial review of the drainage, the lot layout, it's accepted. Adequate transportation improvements, traffic studies provided and accepted. Road improvements, design and construction according to the county's road expansion project. So we are coordinating our access points with the county on their road expansion project. Protect significant cultural, archaeological, and natural and historic resources and landforms. We have a Class 1 survey completed. No significant cultural resources are identified. All available services are provided for, and it does not interfere with any extraction. There's no mining or mineral deposits identified. So summary, we comply with the regulations of Article 403. We conform with the comp plan. We comply with the Douglas County zoning resolution 106. And we comply with the approved estate residential zoning. So with that, I thank you, and we look forward to your approval. We do, are available for questions.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions for the applicant?
I have none. Thank you for that proposal. I read through the packet carefully, and I have no questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Commissioner Teal?
No, I did have a question, but I think that's been answered through the applicant's presentation.
I would agree with that. I think that was a very thorough presentation. I think it probably would make the most sense to open it up for citizen comment. I did receive a note, let's see here. With regard to Candace Gertje, is Candace here? Okay, great. So we will go ahead and open it up for citizen comment, and we will ask Ms. Gertje if she would like to testify first.
Hello, I'm Bobby Ganoeb. I am from the Tallman neighborhood. The reason why I'm a guest, the water here top development, also some reasons I fear that. The water here top development will cause cows with too many population, more pollution, especially our water and sewer lines is that are already crazy traffic, in my opinion. It will root the environment more, especially the violent animals in the neighborhood. Not only that, we have already said, now policemen or if that area have a bad work to gain more protection. To me, with the new development, it doesn't make sense. As a concerned homeowner, I am begging you to please message to our sources on why we are trying to protect the new development. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And let me just ask, is there anyone else with, with some additional needs that would like to testify first? Okay. So with that, let me open it up for additional citizen comment in the room. If you'd like to just state your name and where you're from. Is there any citizen comment in the room? Great.
Hi there. My name is Carly Toko. Thank you so much for listening to us today. I would like to reference the waiver requests. The land proposed for the Fields preliminary plan was rezoned from agricultural to estate residential. The plan is proposing two distinct, very separate developments that are on separate state parcels. There are three state parcels on there, so they could have easily zoned the one parcel that has the cluster of homes and kept the two agricultural that have the large lot homes. As they're claiming, they want to keep them agricultural. They would like to keep the farming and the ranching, which I don't actually see in the estate residential from Douglas County zoning resolution. I don't see farming and ranching as applicable in estate residential. So I'm confused where that came from. And if they want to keep it as agricultural, why did they rezone it? Why is it not still agricultural? So the, the eight large lots are on the 35-plus acre home sites. It's on 317 acres on two state parcels. The second is for 247, approximately quarter-acre size home sites on 258 acres. So they're requesting these waivers just for the home sites, the eight home sites that are on the state, the two state parcels. So this would allow them to rezone to estate residential, but then not conform to estate residential and actually conform to agricultural, which they used to be. So, you know, I wonder, Jill has said that they're treating these large lots as agricultural. Then why did they rezone them? And that's the question, right? In their preliminary plan on page 17, the staff comments state that the age large lots are similar to agricultural one zoning, where residences are routinely served by individual wells. On page 18, it states that the regulation states that all public utility distribution lines should be placed underground, but the 35-acre parcels will utilize existing above-ground facilities. On the same, same page, it also states that the conditions upon which the request for the waiver is based are unique to the property for which the waiver is sought and are not applicable to the other property, so the other state parcel that they would like to build all these cluster homes. The waiver request is specific to proposed development of the 35-plus acre parcels only as the overall size does not require central water in the A1 zoning district. I'm confused because they're not in the A1 zoning district. They rezoned to estate residential. So them claiming that they would like to stay agricultural style, they should have stayed agricultural zoned then, and that would have separated those. So basically, they are combining these state parcels so that they can use the acreage for their gross density, right? So they can come up with that 247 homes on 268 acres. How is that one home per 2.5 acres? Because they added in the agricultural lots that they would like to keep because they added in those acreage into that calculation. If they didn't, if things were properly zoned and these other two state parcels were zoned for agricultural as they are requesting that they are, that they would like those zones to be, to... to be, to be agricultural, to be on wells, to be used for farming and ranching, to use their overhead power lines, this is agricultural. They're comparing them to the agricultural units to the west or to the east of that. So why are they not agricultural? So if they didn't include those, right?
Ma'am, if you're a little bit past time, if you can wrap up your comments.
If they only included that one state parcel, then that would equal with the one dwelling per 2.5 acres, that would equal 52 to 103 homes. Cause in a state residential, it's 2.5 to 4.9 acres. 52 to 103 homes, that would be complying with the DCZR. This is not complying.
And ma'am, just out of respect to everybody here, I'm going to have to ask you to end your comments. Thank you very much. Additional citizen comment?
I'll go.
And I will ask if you do have citizen comment or you're planning to comment, if you can just line up at the podium here and then of course, if you could just state your name and where you're from, we'd appreciate that.
Before you start my timer, my name is Adra Labak. L-A-B-A-K, represent Windy Hills. The reason I'm asking before you start my timer is I'm going to be reading for two people, actually three. One is on behalf of our HOA committee who could not be here today and they asked me to read. It should be about four minutes. I timed it at work today, so hopefully it won't take up so much time. And then I just wanted to read my own personal statement, which was right about three minutes. So if you'd just be willing to give me those, you know, eight minutes, that would be great since I'm representing three different people.
Well, and let me just, again, I want to be fair to all everybody commenting. I appreciate you taking the time to time yourself. Let me ask our council, any issues with a single individual testifying twice in two capacities?
No, you can, you can provide those, those times.
Okay, please.
I can?
Yes, please.
Thank you. This one is on behalf of the HOA. In 2006, a boundary map was presented to Douglas County for the development of Tallman Gulch just off of Hilltop Road located to the west of the proposed Walden Hilltop development. Through the zoning process, Tallman Gulch was zoned rural residential, which per the zoning resolution district requirements, density range should be one dwelling per 9.9 acres to five acres. Due to designated open space, the lots in this area were reduced by over 400% to one and a half acres. Fast forward to the Walden Hilltop Plan development in front of you. This area was recently zoned estate residential originally from an A1 zoning classification. Per the zoning resolution, the density range for these properties should be one dwelling per 4.9 acres to 2.5 acres. However, with the proposed open space, the Walden Hilltop Development has proposed a 400% reduction, now resulting in lot sizes of one quarter to one half acre parcels. This manipulation of lot density with the addition of open space is Pandora's box for our area. Per the 2040 comprehensive master plan, there are seven quadrants that were designated as non-urban subareas with the intention of several objectives and policies created to protect these areas of rural character from urban development within Douglas County. Our area is classified as quadrant four, the northeast non-urban subarea. These non-urban subareas per section three of the 2040 master plan were created in short to protect and preserve the rural character of the county. This development does not meet the 2040 master plan because it is literally the same design as other high-density urban developments in Parker, similar to that of the quarter to half acre lots within Stepping Stone and Meridian. This high-density development plan has no place in our rural community. If this continued reduction of lot sizes continues to be allowed in our northeast non-urban subarea, it will literally continue to dissolve the character of our area as developers use these loopholes to reduce lot sizes well below the zoning designations, all the while violating the policies and intentions of the master plan to protect our area, our history, and the reason why we moved out to this area to raise our kids in a more rural setting. The lots within the proposed Walden Hilltop Development are a 400% reduction from the already reduced Tallman Gulch lots. With the surrounding neighborhoods being true to size, estate residential, rural residential, large rural residential and A1 neighborhoods, the reduction of lot size for the Walden Hilltop Development is so grossly out of proportion to the surrounding areas that even planning Commissioner Rhodes stated during the meeting last week and a quote, "That the plan meets the county's approval standards by the numbers." But he questioned whether the development would be in keeping with the rural character of the area, stating, "I just cannot get there that it conforms with the rules and objectives of the master plan." Also stating that it doesn't maintain the character of the area. The same concerns were also shared by Commissioners Ron and Browning. The other three planning commissioners gave no reason, literally said nothing for their votes. Let us be clear in the fact that we understand that development is going to happen in this area. However, we are asking you, the Board of Commissioners, to help preserve the character and history of our area and decline the high-density development plan as proposed. We respectfully ask that the owner redesign the plan with the intentions and protections set out in the 2040 master plan to preserve the rural character of our area and require a minimum one and a half to three acre lots, similar to that of Tallman Gulch, and to match the visual character of the majority of the surrounding developments. Thank you, on behalf of the HOA. I'm going to try to read real fast for you. Okay, from me, every home in this area has acreage. Surrounding the proposed Fields Development, we have everything from five to 10, 35 to 70, 10 acres on all sides. Jill pointed that out on the map, that's all true. I understand that these requests all should have been addressed to you guys at the rezoning meeting quite a while ago, but the reason we didn't show up and fight was simple. We were all lied to. Two years ago, Jill and Sharon came to our homes, one of them was my own, and sat in our kitchens and they manipulated the truth. They told us what they knew we would go for. They told us that the lots would be one and a half to two acres in size. Everyone that lives around the proposed development was on board with this idea. We knew that it was inevitable that it would be developed, which was why we were happy to support the proposed plan. We went so far as to support them by posting on our Facebook page, and here's a picture of me with them in my kitchen. And we told them what they told us and we shared that and I have that and it should be in your packets because I sent it in already. We unknowingly helped perpetuate their lies by telling our neighbors that they were proposing one and a half to two acre lots and that we should support this development. Man, does that make me sick to my stomach. Jill and Sharon chose to come to our homes acting like the good guys and then they proceeded to twist the truth and the numbers because they knew that we would oppose them. They purposely did not say that it was going to be .24 to .29 acre lots, that they were going to cram as many houses in there as possible. We never, I never would have supported this development had I known the reality of what they were actually planning to do. We trusted them and why wouldn't we? A former county commissioner and a longtime trusted neighbor? A county commissioner who's supposed to fight for the people? Of course we'd trust them. And for Repella, what an abuse of power. She used her former position as a county commissioner to manipulate us by getting everything just so to get this pushed through. She knew how to dot every I and cross every T and she knew every loophole to cover her bases. So yeah, technically, all of her data is by the book and the numbers do line up, but that sure as heck doesn't make it right. And on top of that, she verbally threatened several families in the area. So I'm sorry, but to me, that's inexcusable. Every time last week on Monday when we were all here, and there was a lot more of us because it was an evening and we could come, she was asked a direct question by the Commissioners at the Monday meeting and she either dodged or lied. She answered with things that had nothing to do with the original questions. I sincerely hope that you all watched the recording of that meeting because a lot of people showed up there to speak against this. This proposed development does not align with the 2040 master plan. It goes against section three of the plan. It doesn't fit with the surrounding layouts, character or rural characteristics of the neighboring developments. We are part of the northeastern non-urban area. What has been proposed aligns with a typical urban area of which we are very clearly not. This is unincorporated Parker, the countryside. I have one last little paragraph for you. We ask that you do the right thing here. Please just send the developer back to the drawing board. We fully support the land being developed so long as it aligns with the master plan and with every area surrounding it. It's what we were told and what we thought we were getting. We ask that you require the developer to have a minimum of one and a half acre lots like Tallman or larger lots like every single property that surrounds the proposed development. We respectfully request that you leave the high-density housing in the city where it belongs. Please keep it country and stand with us and do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Heidi Smith.
Hi, welcome.
Thank you. All right. The Fields Plan should not be approved in its current proposed state for the following reasons. The proposed Fields Plan is not in compliance with the Douglas County 2040 Plan. The zoning is one home per two and a half acres, but to attain this ratio, Cornerstone Insight is playing a shell game with the numbers, which has shrunk this property zone for two and a half acre lots to only .29 acre lots, violating section 2502.07 on rezoning because the development will not be compatible with the surrounding land uses. After removing the acreage dedicated to the road expansion, there remains a net of, sorry, I'm a numbers person, so I'm talking numbers, but 597 acres. Per their land use table, which is filed, and I'm sure all of you received a copy of it, the division of the two groupings of lots really proves that these need to be seen as two completely separate developments. One development of 328 acres and another of development of 269 acres. Development one is the 328 acres of rural eight 35 acre lots that are not for sale and will remain with the Walden family members and friends. This represents 55% of the 597 acres. These lots will not, will be not, these will be on well and septic in addition to other rural utilities and they will, they also require those partial waivers. Development two is 269 acres of 247 clustered homes. This represents 45% of the 597 remaining acres. Of the 269 acres, only 75 acres, which is only 25% of the 597, of which will be allocated for home sites. The 194 acres, which is 72% of the total amount, which will be allocated to the open space. This is not fitting with the compatibility, obviously. These lots will be on Parker Water and Sanitation, Excel Energy and Core Electric. 269 acres of 2.5 acre lots would only be 107 homes, which is vastly different than their proposed 247 homes. With these developments being so vastly different, it is easy to see that they need to be treated as two separate developments. Ron Reed, the director at Parker Water, has stressed to our community multiple times that Parker Water does not dictate lot size. What they're doing is maximizing the number of lots for this development to pass on the $2 million cost of getting Parker Water to their land, Parker Water to their land, and they think this is the best way to do it. They are wrong. These costs are much easier to bake into the cost of a two-plus acre lot. It is less than a 10% markup, which when dealing with 100, 1.5 million plus homes, it is entirely negligible to overall cost. Some other new developments that have estate residential and are not in violation of section 2502.07 would be Fox Hill and Two Bridges, not to mention Tallman. All of these communities have gorgeous homes and acreage and blend nicely with the surrounding areas unlike this plan. I only have one more paragraph in this short. We know that Ms. Walden has every right to sell her land and we are not objecting to that. We are merely asking them to go back and redo their plans to adhere to the county's estate residential zoning and long-term plans with more integrity than they use to come up with their current proposed plan. What they have proposed and this shell game that they're trying to play with the numbers is insulting to all of us here, not to mention all of Douglas County. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good afternoon.
Hi, welcome.
Karen Van Zee. I'm one of the neighbors on the property that is north of the subject property. And I want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak before you. I wanted to first explain kind of what sort of, why the sudden uproar, which I think was alluded to a moment ago, is that Sharon Walden did meet with my husband and I, we went over to her property actually, and we, we were trying to remember exactly what was conveyed, but we were left with the impression that the properties would be larger properties, at least one and a half acres. Certainly not small properties like the ones that are being proposed now. And otherwise, I would remember that because of the beautiful nature of this land. We recall that there were 35 acre properties that were described, you know, and also open space and it all sounded pretty good. Shortly before that last meeting where the board was to determine if it was going to approve the rezoning, the, I took a more detailed look at the paperwork we had received and I couldn't reconcile what I understood, what was conveyed at the meeting with Sharon with what the paperwork showed. And, and so I made phone calls to various persons and I can't quite recall which of the people, might have been Jill, might have been Sharon, explained that the more dense housing and, and the way, that it's a gross calculation, not individual. And, and so, and based on that, I understood also that these were going to be clusters where you had kind of a central driveway area, a street that went out, that the houses would be clustered around that and that it would have an open feel. What I'm seeing now is not an open feel. I see completely dense housing. And, and I'm an attorney by profession. I'm a real estate litigation attorney, but I don't do zoning. And even I didn't understand this. I then found out this information prior to that meeting. I felt like the train had already gone out the station, that there wasn't anything we could do about it at that point. I now realize after this last meeting that none of my neighbors understood it either and they didn't get that clarification. I thought that I would convey to you, since my time is so limited, a couple of stories that describe or illustrate sort of the rural nature of that area. And they actually had to do with the Walden property. One day, I was leaving to go to a meeting and out on my front lawn was this gargantuan bull and a small calf. And we knew they had wandered onto the property and, and we suspected that they were from the Waldens. And so I had my husband call over there and sure enough, they were theirs and they came to get these animals off the property. We didn't want to mess with the bull, but it gives you an idea that there's animals in the neighborhood. And, and I actually won't give you the second story, but I would just explain that there's alpacas, there's goats, there's cows, there's, you know, different cattle, there's, pardon me?
Longhorns.
And longhorns that they would have crossing the road, you know, in front of us until we would be delayed. But I guess I would just urge you to please consider all of the comments that were made by the neighbors. And I originally was agreeing to this, but I changed my mind when I saw how many of the neighbors misunderstood what was happening and that's why you didn't hear from them before now. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Counselor.
My name's Paul Marata. My wife and I live in the Tallman Gulch area. We've lived in Tallman Gulch for almost seven years. We love it there. It's a wonderful place to call home. We don't begrudge anyone for wanting to make a profit on their land. However, there's a right and a wrong way to accomplish this. The issue's not with the eight 35 acre lots. The issue's with the 247 clustered lots. Putting a high-density project like this right in the middle of a rural area simply doesn't make any sense. If you take an aerial photograph of the Tallman Gulch, Windy Hills and Hidden Village area and overlay this plan of cluster houses onto the photograph, it looks like you're trying to put a square peg in a round hole. We're not against the development of this site, but it needs to conform with the surrounding areas. Common sense tells us this. The way the Walden project is designed now, there's no synergy. Again, this is rural Parker. A high-density clustered project of this magnitude built right in the heart of Tallman Gulch and Windy Hills would remove this part of rural Parker. All of us who reside in Tallman Gulch, we paid a premium for our lots and for the constructions of our homes. The very expensive lot premium we paid was because of the open space that we all back up to. This would go away, obviously. Having 247 clustered houses back to our lot lines, along with five to seven years of construction noise, would decrease the value of our homes. This is quite disturbing to say the least. If the shoe was on the other foot and anyone from the Walden group lived in Tallman Gulch, Windy Hills or Hidden Village, they would be up here voting, voicing. Windy Hills, or Hidden Village, they would be up here voting, voicing the same arguments and concerns against the scope of this development that we have been making. It's safe to say that they would not be happy with such a high-density cluster development in their backyard. I urge you to come out and drive around these rural neighborhoods and see what us neighbors are talking about. In closing, thank you for taking the time to listen to our side of the story.
Thank you, sir.
Hi. My name is Adam Paschal, P-A-S-C-H-A-L. I also live in Tolman. Today, I'd like to talk about honesty and transparency. Let's be honest and transparent about what this development really is. This is really two developments trying to get underneath the realm of one development. Two developments, large acreage and small cluster homes. If you look at the numbers, then you can understand why they're trying to do it, but that's really what we're looking at here. Also, the developer is bending the intent of the rules to meet the minimum number standards, but does not meet the intent, and I want to stress, the intent of the master plan, the 2040 master plan, and the estate residential zoning. The developer is working through loopholes and technicalities within the system. Clearly, they understand the system and how to work through them in order to conform, to not conform with the intent of the regulations of the master plan in an effort to save money. Let's be honest, this comes down to money. They claim they are doing this to save the trees on the northeast corner and because of conserving water. The fact is, they don't want to pay the additional infrastructure costs for extending the water and sewer lines, the distance that would be required to each of the east, northeast, and north of the properties in order to support the lots with acreage that would support the intent of the master plan, i.e. acreage lots. Extending the road infrastructure required for acreage lots would also cost them money. Extending the fire hydrant system required for acreage lots would also cost them money. Extending the telecommunications infrastructure required for acreage lots would also cost them money. And then Parker, I want to stress, Parker Water does not control the lot sizes for providing the balance of water and sewer services. They can serve a balanced water and sewer system the same they can for acreage lots as for partial acreage lots. This has been confirmed by Mr. Ron Reed from Parker Water Sewer District. And I'd also like to point out the buffer space that was up here, the buffer space between house to house, yes, but there is a sewage pumping system right behind somebody's backyard, the way that it's submitted to you today. The developer misstates the facts, calling nearby Tolman community cluster homes. I'm here to tell you, we are not cluster homes in Tolman. I live on two acres. There are three acre lots that are in there, and the minimum is acre and a half. We're not cluster homes, we're acreage lots in there. The developer states, statement that she refers to in the living room discussions presented on the plan is very different than what was presented. I know I'm running out of time. No nearby neighbors are remotely close to cluster homes, they're all acreage lots. One other thing I want to bring up in closing, and I know I'm running out of time, is the safety aspect. This is not served by Parker Police Department, this is served by Douglas County Sheriff. There are eight, at any one time, eight Douglas County sheriffs that serve the entire county, which is 845 square miles. If you're going to add that many people, that many cluster homes in this area, the infrastructure is just not set up to support this. In, in short closing, I didn't get to cover everything, but the development is okay, we support the development. We're just asking it to be in conformance with the surrounding area, with the acreage lots, not cluster homes. Thank you.
Hello. My name's Jamie Lemaster, L-E-M-A-S-T-E-R, and I am in Windy Hills.
Great, welcome.
Back when this all began, in the beginning stages, Sharon, a longtime respected neighbor, and Jill, an old county commissioner, came door-to-door explaining that they are here for the people, and that she and Sharon want to do what's best for the community under the circumstances of having to sell and develop the land against Sharon's wishes that her sisters were forcing her hand to sell it. That we were told that it was going to mimic Tolman, that it was going to be on one and a half acre lots at a minimum. We understood that Sharon and her family have the right to sell this land, and based on what we were being proposed, it was an okay option, so nobody bothered to come to the rezoning meeting because we believed the old county commissioner, who's gained everybody's trust due to her past position, and a neighbor who was very well-respected. Allowing this dense housing development into the county, into the country will forever change Douglas County for the worst. You will be opening a door for everyone to be able to rezone their large acreage farms and land into small dense housings. You will be opening the door to turning the country into the city. My big question is, what is to become of these large acreage lots that would surround the small-track homes? Is another developer going to be able to come in and buy up all this land and rezone it into more small dense housing lots? This goes against the 2040 master plan. We are a part of the northeastern non-urban area that is outlined in the master plan. This development that they are trying to pass models a typical urban development. It does not belong in the country. I would also like to know how these are lumped into one development. These are two completely different developments, which means they should be planned two completely different ways. On one side, you have water in septic, on the other side, you have city and sewer. The zoning should be determined based on the two, or sorry, I lost mine. These are two completely developments that, and the zoning should be determined off the lot sizes per section and not as a whole. I would also like to say that Jill keeps bringing up the trees. The trees are protected. Their father protected the trees with the Black Forest because he didn't want this land developed, so he protected the trees. None of the trees can be cut down, which is why they're having to develop the wheat fields, because the other part is heavily treed. It's criminal for these developers and this old county commissioner to be able to come in and say that these are on one and a half acre lots, because dividing the total of acres and houses, that's what you get, when in reality, they're nowhere close to one and a half acre lots. They're quarter acre lots. They will look nowhere like homes on one and a half acre lots. The people buying these homes will not own one and a half acre lots, they will own .27 acres. This is city-style lots. Tolman owners, who Jill keeps representing that this development is going to look at, look like, actually own one and a half acres. They also have 50% open space, so they are, lots are equivalent to three acres. The Fields development is nowhere near this. I also have a question as to these three metro districts lots right here. Jill is not being forthcoming with what they are for or how they are going to be accessed, but I would absolutely like to know this because my land is right here, right next to it. The old county commissioner, using her knowledge and her trust gained by her once-held title, is using it against all of us. She should not be rewarded by playing the system with her funny math and be allowed to drop a city development in the country. Please help us keep the country in Douglas County. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Well, Mark, this is Exhibit Three in the Fields preliminary plan.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
So my name's Rob Baker, B-A-K-E-R. I live in Windy Hills. I'm also a Realtor, not speaking on behalf of Realtors Organization. What I did do was, I tried to go on Douglas County and look at the zoning map and pull all of the estate residential properties. Couldn't get the system to work, so I went into the multiple listing service, and the furthest I can go back is 9,999 days, so 10 years of homes, and I searched the estate residential. There were 1,159 homes that came up. In the estate residential in Douglas County of the last 10,000 years, the total homes that are a quarter acre or less are eight. That represents .7%. The total homes that are a half acre to, or less is 35, including the quarter-acred lots. That represents 3%, and those are all located in six different subdivisions. With another 247 homes added, this number jumps to 20% of estate residential being a half acre or less. If you refer to 2502.01, this is not in compliance with 2502.01 of the 2040 master plan, as well as the 2502.03, this will create a substantial change in the character of the neighborhood since the land's last zoning, as well as 2502.07. Project is not compatible with surrounding land, as well as in violation of 5-501 of the Residential Rule District. Furthermore, this completely circumvents the spirit of estate residential. Here are some stats regarding lot sizes. Quarter or a half, .51 to 7.75 acres, 26 homes, 2.2%. .76 to 1 acres, 34 homes, 2.9%. 1.01 to 1.25 acres, 36 homes, 3.1%. 1.26 to 1.5 acres, 38 homes, 3.3%. 1.51 to 2 acres, 222 homes, 19%. 2.01 to 2.5 acres, 319 homes, 28%. 2.51 to 3 acres, 236 homes, 20%. 3.3 to 4 acres, 109, 9.4%. 4 to 5 acres, 51 homes, 4.4%. 520 acres, 79 homes, 6.8%. 1.51 plus acres represents 87% of all estate residential. 167 homes are under 1.5 acres, 14.4%, spread over 13 subdivisions with an average of 12.8 homes per community. If you look at the maps, this is the map that was provided whenever they went around and showed everybody the map. If you look at the map, this goes from Parker Road to Delbert to, and then runs up Hilltop and then over to Singing Hills. This is half acres or le, half acre or less lots versus a proposed site. One and a half acres or less, which is Tolman over there, one and a half acres, so that's more in line with kind of what's happened before. 1.5 to 5 acres, those lots are everywhere out there, which is representative of what's out there. And then you can look at the 5 to 40 acres as well. So, thank you all for y'all's time, thanks for letting me come up and talk, and I appreciate y'all listening.
Thank you for being here.
My name's Monica Wheeler, I live just northwest of this property.
Welcome.
I was at the rezoning meeting, and the smoke and mirrors everybody's talking about is how I feel as well. They did mention there would be some larger lots, but nothing as small as these cluster homes. I'm not going to repeat what every other great neighbor of mine has said already about opposing this cluster area of it. One of my concerns that hasn't been addressed here is the fact that Hilltop Road, Singing Hills Road are getting more and more traffic. They're already dangerous. Adding access points for this neighborhood onto Hilltop seems like a really bad idea. It's already a bad road. And then, I don't know whose brilliant idea it was, to think about putting a roundabout to get Hilltop to Singing Hills, that's only going to slow down traffic, back it up when it is busy, and being a rural area, we all have a lot of traffic with big trailers, semis coming in with hay, large horse trailers, et cetera, and roundabouts don't go real well with those kinds of rigs. So I'd like to have you really consider a traffic light, if necessary, one that's triggered, you know, by the appropriate need at off-hours. But a roundabout's a really bad idea, and access, more access points onto Hilltop is also pretty dangerous, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any additional citizen comment in the room?
Hi.
Welcome.
My name's Matthew McNew, 11094 East Oxon Road. Didn't have time to put anything together for this. God's got a twisted sense of humor. I was in a car crash last Wednesday on Hilltop in Flintwood, heading home. Real quick, I'm project manager for State of Colorado Planning and Technical Services with Human Services. Used to work for Public Safety. When it comes to construction, my job every day is to figure out what's the contractor not telling me, what did the architect miss in their answers to requests for information, and just by looking at the documents up here, I can see some of the things that are coming, the why, why this is laid out the way it is. That's why my boss puts me on when there's a project with an issue, he goes, "Go take care of this." Nonetheless, taking things down to a quarter of an acre, what they're not showing you in your drawings, your details is, they're not showing you the floodplain or the topographical that shows you that, hey, we got this much acreage. That's because those are in floodplains. That's Army Corps of Engineers, they can't develop that. They can say it's open space, but you can't build anything in it, things in that direction. As far as separating the properties the way it is on Hilltop versus the 35-acre lots, the direction that is going for this is, if we get our foot in the door, get the condensed housing put in, then when we go to develop the 35-acre lots, then we're going to be like, oh my gosh, I missed this. Flintwood is a rolling hill road. You have line of sight, it's a public safety issue. Like I said, I used to work for Public Safety, for being around troopers, you pick stuff up. So nonetheless, now all of a sudden you have these 35-acre lots, you're not going to be able to put a driveway on, and some of them on the drawings, it's, it's the drainage that comes off of Kenny Black's old place that comes through there. You can't put a driveway in there, that's back to floodplain. Shows on the map is a 35-acre lot, but you can't build on it. So moving forward in the future, we get this condensed housing area, then we're going to move to, well, we didn't realize this, can we rezone this to high-density housing? I think people in Windy Hills are upset now that when, you know, now you've set precedents for the condensed housing on Hilltop, now the 35-acre lots to get one entrance there because you won't have line of sight. And the reason I bring up line of sight was, five years ago, you know, five, six years ago, Douglas County came in and paved the north side of Singing Hills and Flintwood back to Windy Hills and Stagecoach Acres, because they typically, don't quote me on this, but it used to, Douglas County has a requirement of 250 vehicles on a road requires it to be paved. When they did their traffic study, it was between 700 and 900 on Flintwood alone. So, like I said, once we get this done, you're going to move to the next one, that's going to create a lot more traffic that you can't put on that road, plus the line of sight isn't there where you can legally put more, those individual driveways on. So we'll come back and ask, they'll come back and ask for requests, go, hey, can we change this? We didn't figure this. And then all the other, like the person said, the 35-acre lots east of Flintwood, now it's a precedent that those lots, because contractors will find the water, whether it's from other ranchers or wherever, and they'll say, hey, these 35-acre lots aren't on a subdivision, we want to do the same thing, and now you're legally bound that you've set precedents to allow them to do, word had been told not to use, stack-and-pack housing. It's, and it will just completely change that whole atmosphere out there. Like I said, I was in a crash, lady turned on to hold Hilltop in front of me, I was three-quarters way through the intersection, couldn't figure out why I missed it until I saw the impact point where the car hit. Hilltop, for as many decades has been, Hilltop has always been known, I don't know if any of you live out that way.
And sir, you were at time, if you can wrap up.
Hilltop's always been known as Killtop, and it still has that, so thanks for your time.
And very sorry about your accident. Hope you get well soon.
It is what it is.
Additional citizen comment? Yes, ma'am.
Staff did receive four more letters.
Okay, if you want to submit that to Attorney Garcia while we're accepting citizen comment.
Including a letter from Anadarko, who has mineral rights out on this property. They have no concerns at this time, but will continue to monitor this application.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Scott. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Janet Hildebrandt, H-I-L-D-E-B-R-A-N-D-T. I live just north of the proposed development off of Flintwood, and a couple of things I would like to address is, they keep, the developer keeps saying that there's a barrier of these big, beautiful trees. Yeah, they at one time were big and beautiful. Right now, they are currently dying, and it is consistent with beetle kill, and nothing has been done to preserve these old-growth trees. My husband sent an email, I don't know if you all received the email from him, he sent it back two, three days ago, regarding the old-growth trees and how they are dying. He does know this for a fact because he's been running a tree business for the last 40 years. So that barrier is going to be null and void in just a matter of time. Another thing that we'd also like to address is, the traffic issue is a huge thing. It takes us forever to get out off of Flintwood, onto Singing Hills, to get to work, to get to a hospital, to get anywhere. And we sit and we wait, and we wait, and we wait some more. Another thing is Matt's accident. We went and picked him up that day of the accident, and the first responders were absolutely fantastic. The Sheriff's Department was there, the Fire Department was there, the EMTs were there, they were absolutely amazing. We were talking about this so-called development that they want to put in, and the words of the first responders were, quote-unquote, "That is the stupidest idea I have ever heard." So, larger lots, fine, great, we have no problem with the larger developments. These cluster homes have no place in our rural community, that we need to have them go back to the drawing board, resubmit a plan, and move forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there any additional citizen comment in the room?
Hi, I'm Lindsay Glass from Tolman. I just wanted to come up and address you guys, just as the last comment. My husband and I, with our two young kids, searched forever for land that we wanted to buy, where there was going to be space. And now with what Jill and Sharon are planning on doing, is going to be putting us pretty much back from where we wanted to move from. That area that they're wanting to develop, we understand that Sharon and her family want to sell that land. And like all of my other neighbors and I are, we're saying, we don't disagree with that. We understand. But the thing that's a little frustrating to me is being a neighbor in this room and watching Jill and Sharon smirk and laugh at all of our comments when they were the ones that literally came into our kitchens, or met with our families, and threatened us that if we didn't go along with their plan, that somebody else would come in and develop it, and we would have no choice. Just like they're trying to make us feel like we have right now. Right, Jill? So what I'm asking is, please, have them go back to the drawing boards. Please have them do the lot layouts, the way that it goes with the rest of our lands. At least one and a half acres, that's what we live on. We love it. We would love to welcome more neighbors, but we don't want an overload where, like everyone is talking about, the traffic is horrendous. I mentioned last time at the last meeting, we sit in traffic forever to take my kids to school, that we have to walk them in because they're tardy. So we're just asking, and asking Sharon and Jill, you know what, if it was one of them, like our other neighbors said, if they were the ones living in our neighborhoods, they would want the same thing. They wouldn't want the lay of the land completely changed. And we understand, once Sharon and her family get the money from this land, that's great. They get to go on, and they get to do whatever they want with the money. And Jill will get her cut of the money too, and be able to move on with it. But we are the ones that are out here living. This is our life. And the land that we love, and the development that we love, the animals, everything else, is all going to change. And that never would have happened if they didn't have this plan come about. If there was more space, we'd be okay with that. So we're just asking you to take into consideration what all of us neighbors are wanting. We just want our neighborhood and the rural to stay rural, and leave the city in the city, like all the rest of my neighbors have said. So we appreciate you taking the time to listen, and we just hope that you guys will look in on both sides, and we can come with a compromise.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is there any additional citizen comment in the room? Okay, let me ask Troy, is there any citizen comment online?
Thank you, Commissioner Layden. I have no online comment.
Okay, with that, I'll close citizen comment, and ask the applicant to return and address citizen comment. Ms. Repala?
Thank you, commissioners. I'm going to ask Sharon Waldine and her sisters, they would like to address some of the public comments, and then I'll return and address many of the other ones.
That's fine.
Sharon Waldine, 7199 Flintwood Road. And my sisters are here as well, Linda, Rita, and Jan.
Welcome.
Our history in Douglas County dates back to the 1880s, when our great-grandparents and their siblings moved to the area and began homesteading. Our parents bought this land from our grandfather nearly 80 years ago, and they worked hard to build, to pay for it and to build a farming operation. We were all part of the workforce, and as I requested, both lived their last days and literally their last moments on the farm. And for the last 20 years since they've been gone, we've continued the farming activities. Farming as we've known it is no longer an option. It is no longer the rural community that we knew. The housing developments have come up all around us. The wheat fields that we are growing will soon be gone. We have no reliable source to harvest the wheat we grow. It's simply not economical for custom cutters to move their heavy equipment to areas that provide such a limited opportunity for them. After 100 years of hard work, those pastoral wheat fields will be gone forever. Developments have been active on our borders since the 1960s. The momentum varies with the activity of new houses on our fence lines and borders, but it has never stopped. The consequences of overall development result in one final tally, another family farm gone. The ultimate consequence is painful, but less frustrating than the day-to-day thoughtlessness of people who are new to living in the country and have no respect for fences or borders. People see no harm in trespassing, leaving behind their tracks and their trash. We have endured a long list of malicious activities due to unlawful entry by crossing through our barbed wire fence, or even cutting the wires to enter our property on their ATV or snowmobile. Our cattle have been harassed, our windmills stolen. Fiber optic cable was laid inside our property after cutting our fence in two places to allow their machine to enter and exit our land, to name a few. The encroachments may be temporary or permanent, but they are all wrong, and they expose the trespassers to dangers that they don't understand, while subjecting us to liabilities that are totally out of our control. Even though development has always impacted our farming activities, and the intrusions on our land continue, we firmly believe in property rights. We did not object to the development around us. We're asking that the same respect, we're asking for the same respect for our property rights. In our community outreach, that belief was expressed. In several instances, our effort to provide information was well-received, but considered to be unnecessary, to quote, "It's your land, you should do what you want with it." And in our community outreach, I will guarantee, we had no reason to be intimidating or threatening. I'm sorry if every, I don't know how people have come up with that feeling, but that was certainly never an intentional verbal affront or anything. We were, we were happy to answer questions if they were misunderstood. And certainly, it was never made a big deal that Jill had been a former county commissioner. That was never even brought up. People have called, letting us know that they do support our plan, and they recognize that it does deliver as it intended. But it is clear that the voices against us have caused reluctance to vocalize anything in favor of our plan. One of our longtime neighbors, who knew our parents, and who knows how much we love this land, described this plan as thoughtful and considerate. We do not have restrictions from our family regarding our trees. This is, we have always loved these trees, who couldn't? There aren't that many stands of big, dense ponderosa pines out there. We do, we do believe that this plan does totally target the major concerns of our neighbors. Water is essential. Water has always been an issue for people relying on wells. Groundwater levels do go down as more wells tap in. We had to drill a new well, a deeper well, as the five-acre subdivisions built around us. It's a big deal. It's expensive. It's disruptive, excuse me, disruptive. The community water system provided by this plan is the only solution. It helps protect the ground levels for a great number of people with wells. Large-sized lots of 35 acres and larger will border the clustered lots. The trees in the hills are protected and will continue to be. That is why the whole property was included there. And though, we're not setting this up so that we have our corner and can make money off of all of our neighbors. The existing natural landscape is left undisturbed. The views in the hills and trees remain the same. The wildlife has a place to roam. This plan protects our natural resources. This plan leaves the maximum vegetation, trees, and ground undisturbed. This plan honors the land.
Thank you very much. And if you can stand by for a moment, let me just ask the board, are there any questions for the applicant? Any questions or comments?
I think Jill's going to come up still, so I might have some questions for her.
Okay.
We understand the emotions of the neighbors, absolutely. Candidly, Sharon's wheat fields are beautiful. We had many neighbors express to us that they're really sad about this development because they want, they absolutely love looking out at Sharon's wheat fields. We understand those emotions. We will respond to the application, the questions directed at the application, and to the approval standards. Will not respond to the personal accusations, the false accusation, the personal attacks. The first thing I want to address, because I think this part is very important, and I have some exhibits that you can take a much closer look at, if I may approach and bring those. If Sharon could hold up the board.
And you know, let's, I want to make sure that whatever you're showing us, is that what we have on the exhibit?
That's the exhibit.
It's the same? Okay, sure. And if that's helpful for us to see that larger. Unfortunately, so my eyes are getting weaker by the year.
That's the board we took around all the neighbors.
Okay.
You're getting the exhibit that's exactly the board.
Which is that? Okay.
And what I'm trying to demonstrate here is that we did not mislead the community. We said that the homes would be clustered on the wheat fields. That's exactly what we're proposing. As a matter of fact, what you're looking at, the lot sizes are reflected smaller, the density is reflected higher. Our plan, the lot sizes are larger, and the density is less. But we always said the homes would be clustered on the wheat fields, and the large lots would be around the perimeter. Now, this is when we were going into zoning. Zoning addresses gross density. One unit per two and a half acres, that's the estate residential density. I will note that the Tallman community, although it is rural residential, the Tallman community got a 35 percent density bonus given to them, which brought their density in line with closer to the one unit per two and a half to three acres. That is their actual density. How the lots are laid out is different, primarily because they have septic systems, and they cannot have lots smaller than one acre. We cannot do septic systems. So that is in contrast with what has been stated. This is what they were shown. That is the board that, you saw it in the photo. So I want to make sure that part is very clear. Absolutely had no intention to deceive anyone. I can understand land use is complex. I can understand there's confusion in that. No malicious intent whatsoever. We were 100 percent transparent. We left our phone numbers, they knew how to contact us if they had questions. So I wanted to address that community outreach. The next thing I would like to give to the board are the comp plan policies that we meet, didn't provide it in the PowerPoint, because that was addressed during zoning. But if you'd like to look through the comp plan policies and how we meet them, I have it in hard copy. And I'll hand this out to you.
Jill, where's, let me just stop you for a second. Where's the lot sizes on this? So in the high-density residential area?
It's depicted in what I would call more the graphic.
Uh-huh.
At that time, we did not know what the actual lot sizes were going to be, because that requires engineering to lay out those lot sizes. We had to adjust our plan because of the 42 acres that was given to the county, that will be given to the county for the right-of-way. We had to adjust for the drainages. So this was a conceptual plan, and we told everyone, we don't know that they will lay out exactly like this, but the clustered homes will be on the wheat fields. Consistently stated that, and that's exactly what we're proposing.
Well, I appreciate the response to that question, but I'm telling you, just, I'm a real estate attorney by trade, like our colleague who also testified. I'm looking at this, and I wouldn't have guessed the lot size by what you're showing. So I appreciate the fact that you indicated you had some community meetings, but I could not expect a citizen to guess what kind of density we'd actually be discussing today based upon this.
But they were told the density is one unit per two and a half acres gross density, the homes would be clustered on the wheat fields. It's exactly what they were said, told.
No, it is not.
Yeah, and I'm going to call the meeting to order. At this point, we're going to give the applicant an opportunity to respond. But I will say, that is, I think, part of the fuzzy math. Jill, let me be real candid, I was a planning commissioner before I was a county commissioner. I know you served for many years right at this dais. There's a radar that goes across my brain when these applications come forward. And if there are a bunch of citizens that get really fired up and are told that they were misled at this level, there's a gap. And so, I respect, and I know you, I know you probably sat down and had the conversation and showed this map, but I am deeply concerned that citizens, which are mostly in my district, all of the, north of Hilltop is my district, it's making our job harder. And you know that. You know, when citizens come here and they feel like they were misled, it makes it very tough for us. So I think a higher degree of transparency and authenticity around the actual lot size would have been much more helpful on the front end. And I, that probably wouldn't have helped your argument at that kitchen table, but I think that level of transparency would have encouraged your neighbors and allowed us to make a better decision today. So I'm a little bit disappointed by this, to be honest. I appreciate you sharing it with us, but I do have some questions about it.
If I could just add, since you've made a comment, it says at the top, there's 369 dwellings on here, and they're bringing forward 255. So, just to point that out, there's a big difference there with what is on this map and what's been brought before us.
One thing I would like to point out is, this was straight zoning, estate residential straight zoning. If this were a PD coming forward at zoning, a lot of those details would have been worked through a little bit more. But typically, PD zoning, when they're brought forward, they ask for higher density. We did not get a density bonus here. We did not ask for higher density. We stayed right within the estate residential, because that's what the surrounding properties were. We had to meet the 50 percent adjacency, and it met that. And so that's why we, we actually were more transparent than we should have been, because we should never at that point been talking about the lot layouts, because it was straight zoning. We even had staff say, you probably shouldn't be showing the cluster, it was in our original application, and they said to take it out. So what Sharon and I were trying to do is to give the neighbors a snapshot ahead in time, as to this is how we're going to lay it out, because we were very proud of the fact that we were protecting the surrounding wells. And that was our highest priority, was the groundwater. I have some other things that I want to go over.
Sure.
And I'm more than happy to come back with on this. In what I handed out with the comp plan, I do want to have you look at the maps in the back, because this has been brought up, the non-urban area. The non-urban area in the county is massive. It's the whole southern area of the county. And in those sub-areas, the Cherry Valley and the, let's see, my notes. The very large areas of the non-urban sub-area, most of the densities that are identified in those sub-areas in the comp plan call out one dwelling unit per 35 acre. In the northeast sub-area, one dwelling unit per two and a half acres is allowed. And if you look at the northeast sub-area comp plan map, you can see there are much smaller lots located in the northeast sub-area than there are in the other non-urban areas. I just wanted to point that out in reference to the comp plan. I do have some slides that I think would clarify some issues at the end of our PowerPoint. Estate residential zoning resolution. To promote a design sensitive to the natural land features and adapts to the natural topography, flexibility in lot size is allowed. Natural environment and water availability. I want to highlight that. The next thing I'd like to do is to read some excerpts out of the water supply section in the comp plan. Very first sentence, water supply is a top priority for Douglas County residents. That was our top priority in laying out this plan. Another section, develop county-wide solutions to reduce dependence on Develop county-wide solutions to reduce dependence on Denver Basin aquifers. Reducing water consumption prolongs the life of the water supplies. Protect natural areas and promote compact development, which is important for conserving water resources. Have water management planning. Use water efficiency through reuse and water-saving technologies will contribute to reliable water supply for Douglas County. Reuse. Water providers may be able to utilize their return flows to further extend the life of their water supplies. Prolong life of water resources. Minimize water consumption. Maximize the efficient use of water. Support long-term water supply planning. Groundwater. Groundwater quality may be affected by the inappropriate location of septic systems in the vicinity of wells and the infiltration of water from waste disposal sites. Contamination of groundwater from these other sources should be prevented. Commissioners, in the business meeting you just approved, significant amount of money to solve problems based on old type of land use. When we brought forward this plan, this area in blue, they are all on well and septic. That's why we did the large lots around that perimeter. This is Parker Water and Sanitation. In order for us to include, we had to be contiguous. This is the wheat fields where the clustered homes are. This will be served by Parker Water and Sanitation. Not only the water, but the sewer. This is our metro district service area. So in context of this particular site, in planning the land use on this particular site, this made the most sense. While I'm on this slide, I will, I will address the comments about why this was a part of this overall application. This entire property is zoned estate residential. Estate residential allows agricultural activities. These parcels are protected. They are part of the overall subdivision. They cannot be subdivided in the future. So it protects these lands to always be the 35 to 52 acre sites. Water consumption. This is an important slide to understand. Our field, the size of our field lots, the outdoor water use is 2,250 gallons per month. A typical one and a half acre lot, 13,500 gallons per month. A massive 600% difference between the two. The septic systems, there's zero reuse and no, no return flows. Parker Water and Sanitation sewer system, 100% of the reuse and the return flows. This part of the comp plan, the northeast sub-area, has been referred to in the past as semi-rural. The Tallman zoning application called that community semi-rural. It's a misnomer to think it's rural, like all the southern areas of the non-urban area in the comp plan. But what I want to point out in this is the difference between the timeframe in which the surrounding community was zoned. Windy Hills through Meats and Bound, it wasn't zoned, it wasn't even subdivided, but it was divided into five acre parcels. Many of the homes have two residences on those five acre parcels. There was no comp plan in place. There is, there is no open space or wildlife corridors. There is no adjacency buffers. Those property lines go right up to the Walden's fence. They're all in individual wells and septic. No water conservation plan. Hidden Village, this community down here, no comp plan in place. It was 1960s. They're two and a half to five acre lots. That's estate residential size. No open space down here. No wildlife corridors. No adjacent buffers. They're right up against Sharon's property again. All well and septic, no water conservation plan. Tallman is the newest community. It was zoned in 2002, and in their zoning documents, they referred to it as semi-rural. Additional 35% density bonus, one unit per 3.6 acres. They are clustered. The lot sizes are about one and a half acre in size. There is open space. It was a different comp plan. They have septic systems, which is why their lots are larger than one acre municipal water, but no conservation plan and no restrictive covenant. All the Tallman community, they could take all the water from that Parker Water and Sand. There's no restrictive covenant that limits it to just serve the homes. So what I'm trying to point out here, many of the communities around us, very different circumstances. Not one of these communities can meet the comp plan policies that we meet with our application. None of the surrounding communities can have the water plan that we have, which was our highest priority. There are other projects in the northeast sub-area recently that have been approved that has a density of one dwelling unit per 1.9, lot size is .29, and the Trails project, density of one unit per 2.1 acre and lot size is .7. So in the northeast sub-area, there have been other projects that have been approved, and these projects were approved unanimously. So with that, I'm hoping that answers some of the questions, and if I missed any, I'd be happy to go back and address them. I tried to hit the why the, the large lots are part of this. It actually protects those from any future subdivision.
Well, and then let me make it clear for those that have taken their time to be with us, our process here is citizen comment, and then the applicant has the opportunity to respond. I will say, though, this is your hearing room. We work for you, not the other way around, and we greatly appreciate you being here with us in the middle of the day. We know it's been a long hearing. A couple of quick comments. Jill, I get it. I think we've had a lot of conversations around clustering and density bonuses, which we no longer do in the same way here, really, at all. And I know we're trying to analogize to that. Obviously, with Tallman being 1.5 acres in lot size, I do go back to the comprehensive master plan and think about just congruity with adjacent neighborhoods. And based upon the current density you're proposing, it just simply does not seem to be congruent with, with what's happening next door. I do take the comprehensive master plan very seriously. The planning commission is the author of that. They spend a lot of time with that CMP. So for us to dismiss or try to circumvent those critical characteristics, I think, is dangerous. I'm not insinuating that you're trying to circumvent, but I think we heard a lot of citizen comment around an impression that it wasn't clear to them. And I respect my colleague's comment that the map shows some information at the top, but it's in a teeny-tiny font, and there still isn't a whole lot about actual size per unit. I heard a lot of citizen comment around, we expect development. Development's going to happen, but could it please be consistent with our comprehensive master plan? Could it be consistent with our adjacent neighborhoods? So for that reason, I'm still pretty troubled by this application.
I just want to remind you all, and for the record, this is a subdivision application. The zoning has been approved. One unit per two and a half acre is the density. That's been approved. Subdivision is specifically addressing the lots and the way the lots are subdivided. So that's what we're focused on today. One thing I can say is we've taken a cursory look. If the board approves the preliminary plan today, through the final plat process, we can, there's two different lot sizes on our plan. Some are smaller, some are larger. We believe in looking at it, that we can bring all the lot sizes to the larger size. And we believe we can do that and stay consistent with the preliminary plan as approved today. One of the gentlemen in Tallman, when we met with them, asked if we could put trees as a buffer in that open space. We can do that. That would be brought forward in the landscape plan. We would need to work with the landscape architect to identify the species of trees that would survive in that area. The Tallman side of the plan, we might have the opportunity to increase those lot sizes a bit and stay within the preliminary plan, consistency within the preliminary plan as approved. So we can make those adjustments at final plat and in the landscape plan.
Well, I appreciate that, Jill. And you're always so good at understanding not only the legal criteria, but what's critically important for us as, as decision-makers up here. I do reflect upon staff's work, and they're very clear in their assessment that the applicant has not provided sufficient information to demonstrate compliance with the preliminary plan. And they cite approval standards 40302, 40305, and 40306. They also state that it's staff's assessment that without the approval of the waiver request, the application would not be in compliance with the approval standard 40302. You know, in reviewing the application, I have no doubt that with your incredible skillset, there could be more worked out in the future. I'm not saying that's what you have to do, but I would encourage my board to think about, as an option, referring this back, so that additional information can be provided to our staff, and some additional assurances and perhaps compromises can be reached, as stated from the many citizens that were here.
I would like staff to address, I'm sorry.
Yeah, if I could just address that. Staff made it clear at the beginning when they gave their presentation that our engineering department had gone through recent paperwork that had been supplied by the fields, and it met the qualifications. Heather said that.
And I heard that. Let me go back to Heather. So in terms of your staff recommendation, can you maybe state where you're at today?
Heather Scott, at the time we wrote the staff report, we were concerned that all of the drainage had not clearly been addressed. There were still a few reports we asked for. Since that time, as of April 14th, the applicant did provide the additional reports that we requested. So if you look at 40302, 05, and 06, I believe, they were in regards to drainage.
Well, that's helpful. And I heard the issue, issues related to engineering. With regard to the comprehensive master plan, is it still staff's recommendation that there are additional issues or information that would be necessary? Jeanette?
I'm going to jump in here. Jeanette Baer for Planning Services. As you know, we don't really make recommendations, but we provide an assessment. And I think in our assessment of the comprehensive master plan, we indicated that it's, you know, there are competing values and goals and policies, and that there are a couple different ways to look at the comprehensive master plan. And I think we tried to provide both sides of that, so that you'd be able to make that decision.
Okay, thank you.
I think section 125 on the administrative for zoning addresses the comp plan policies and how they're interpreted within the approval criteria.
I understand the balancing. Further board discussion?
Yes, thank you. This took a lot of time to go through and read all of it. And what I found compelling is that the plan seems to take the parcel, the 600 and some acres, and figure out what is the best solution for the community. What we have heard over and over and over is about, there is no water. And when I read through all of the letters last night, I heard that over and over, there is no water. So what appears to me is that this developer has chosen to figure out how many lots, how many, how many homes they can put on this parcel. 255. So they have figured out how they can cluster them together to get a central water and wastewater system, which is gold, because Parker Water takes those return flows and uses them over and over and over to extinction. So what that does is gives all of the neighborhood a better opportunity to maintain those wells that Ms. Repella has talked about, because instead of having, I don't know if you would have 200 homes or 250 homes with wells sucking water out of the aquifer, what you have now is a central provider providing water to these houses in a clustered area. Then the wastewater goes back to Parker Water. Parker Water cleans it, sends it back, so it is used over and over and over, which saves your wells. I think, when I looked through this last night and read it, I thought, that is the genius in this. And that they have provided eight 35 to 54 acre lots around the perimeter as a blend, so that it's not the high density in the middle, I mean, on the edges. There is a blend into the community. Another thing that we heard about is transportation. I have been a commissioner now, I'm in my seventh year, and we have been doing plans to improve Hilltop since I have been here. We have approved designs. We have approved projects. And I know that there is money and plans. Matt is sitting back there. If I say 2027, is that when Hilltop is supposed to be done? Is it okay if Matt comes and answers this question?
Yes, please. Matt?
Good evening, Commissioners. Matt Williams with Engineering Staff. We are going through right-of-way acquisition right now on the Hilltop Road project. We'll be relocating utilities at the end of 2023 into 2024, with construction starting end of 2024.
Okay. And so that is going to add capacity and aroundabout, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, Matt. So I would just like to point out that we have heard your concerns. I have friends who live along Hilltop Road and have cars going through their fence all the time. So I am well aware of the problems with Hilltop Road and that, that traffic. So we are working on it, and you've heard that it will be starting next year. So that's the transportation comment. So the density matches what they are allowed. And as I read through all of these, it appears to me that this project meets the criteria that we have been proposed to. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Commissioner Teal, any thoughts?
Well, I certainly like the larger lots, and, you know, I'd absolutely support the waivers on the eight 35-plus acre lots. That's a, that's a total no-brainer for me. The problem is, I just can't support the cluster home, you know, methodology with, with, in a state residential zoning. Bring us a better plan.
Yeah, and I think I would agree with you, Commissioner Teal. Again, it just seems out of character with 40301 and conformity with the master plan. And I know there's some balancing there, and there's some economies of scale that makes sense with the clustering. You know, I think Commissioner Thomas's comments were more persuasive around, you know, the genius of the plan in terms of the water supply, but is that not, can that not be accomplished with a larger lot size?
Commissioner, one of the requirements before we can come into a hearing today in order to meet the criteria was for us to get an inclusion agreement with Parker Water and Sand, which I showed you the inclusion area. Now we are bound within that area to adjust the lots, which is why I offered that we believe through the final plat process, we can stay consistent with the preliminary plan, cluster concept, and increase half the lot sizes to match the other half size, and increase some of the lot sizes over on the western edge. We can do that within that area, but we have a service, Metro District Service Plan that has that area identified. We have Parker Water and Sand's inclusion area. So we are now limited within that area, and we have some drainage ways. We could certainly go into the drainage ways and do pipes underground, but the goal was to ensure that we had open space that went in and through that community. So those are the parameters that we are going to be working with now, because of the requirements to come before you today to have all those in place.
Okay, I understand that. Let me just restate, so are you making a commitment then here to, to have the conversation with the community and with Parker Water and Sand around lot size, around the perimeter? Is that what you're saying?
We can make those accommodations and still stay consistent with the conservation plan. Though if we go, we're not going to be able to go really large on lot sizes unless we gobble up all that open space, but we can increase the lot sizes from where they're at now and stay consistent with the conservation plan. We have to stay within that inclusion area. So we can make it work with what I said that we would be willing to do as we go into the final plat stage. Making the commitment that we can increase half the lot sizes to match all the larger size, and increase the lot sizes on the western edge, and provide some landscape tree buffers on the western edge. We can do those things, can be accomplished in the next stage.
So, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate you engaging with us in the conversation, and hopefully that appeases some of the citizen concern. So from a procedural standpoint, we would see the granular specifics in terms of those lot sizes in the, in the final plat?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Yeah, it just, so in reviewing the application, let me go back to staff and ask, there just seemed to be a lot of gaps where you were asking for additional information. Do you feel like all of those gaps have been closed for you in terms of additional needs that you had?
Good evening, Commissioners. Brad Jackson with Engineering Services. We did receive additional correspondence from the applicant and their We did receive additional correspondence from the applicant and their engineers in regards to the drainage ways on the property. And I don't know, do we have the plan layout that shows the corridors? Yeah, that would be helpful. So it might not appear too clearly up there on the screen, but the applicant did provide drainage corridors over the top of the existing drainage ways that are present on the site. And the engineers for the applicant have done some initial site analysis. They've walked the drainage ways, they've looked at the historic nature of the drainage ways and how stable they are, and they have come up with the recommendation that those corridors that they have left on the preliminary plan would be able to support any necessary drainage improvements in the future without impacting the lotting layout that they've currently shown. And that was kind of the additional analysis the engineering was looking for with the preliminary plan in order to, you know, feel confident that the preliminary plan could move forward as it's presented today.
So, just to clarify, do you feel confident that the preliminary plan can move forward?
Yes, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. Well, I do appreciate the concession. It does seem as though it'd be helpful for me as a decision-maker to see some of those specifics. I have some concern about kicking the can to the next hearing for us. You know, I know that game too. It's moving forward, we'll get it done on the next one, and then we point back and say, well, everything got done in the previous hearings. I'm not saying that that would happen here. I hope it wouldn't, but I'd like to get this addressed here as opposed to kicking the can to the next hearing. But I, Commissioner Teal, do some of the applicant's comments satisfy your concerns?
No, no. I mean, I just didn't hear anything that could get me there with this preliminary plan. And I just can't support that cluster density under a state residential. Now, listen, the question I was going to ask the applicant that I didn't end up having to ask, and absolutely, Commissioner, come on up, but, I mean, the question I was going to ask is why don't we see two separate plants here? Why don't we see two separate zonings? You answered that satisfactorily in your presentation. I guess I just don't agree with the interpretation. And, I mean, I get it, the assertion is being made that this is compliant with 40301. I disagree. And perhaps this is, you know, Commissioner Repella has stumbled across a legal loophole in our planning methodology. So be it. I'm happy to hear that clarified in the judicial system, but I can't support this plan right now as a preliminary plan. I just can't get behind it. It's too, I can't point to that and say that's a state residential. And, oh, by the way, I don't necessarily hate the concept behind the plan of preserving more open areas, preserving larger lots, larger individual properties while doing some sort of density clustering. This just goes too far for the state residential for me. I just can't support it.
Yeah, and I would agree with that. Let me ask Planning Staff to bring up the potential options for action and consideration of the board today.
So this obviously is linked to the two waivers and then, which would have to be acted upon first, but for the preliminary plan, as Heather will pull up, you can approve, approve with conditions, table, continue.
Can you pull that slide up?
Yeah.
You know, and I think a lot of work and goodwill has been put into this application. I do respect private property rights and familiar with the applicant. Seems like an amazing group of sisters with a great reputation. It seems like an opportunity for maybe some additional study based upon where the Board of County Commissioners may be today. So I might recommend for my colleagues that we not deny, but simply table for further study. And I'll ask council what the, would that effectuate a denial?
It would.
Okay. Is there an opportunity to, well, remaining this back to the Planning Commission, I think, creates some other dynamics. Jeanette?
Well, I was just gonna say, and I'm not advocating for anything here, but if Ms. Repella is wanting to maybe make some of those adjustments that you were talking about, that might be something for a continuance to come back, just so that we can make sure that doesn't interfere with some of the drainage channels and things like that. I mean, it might be something worth looking at before we get to final plat, if that's what you want to do. That's an option, is to continue and have her affect some of those changes perhaps.
So not table for further study, but continue for further study?
Right, and it's up to you whether you think that would have to go back to the Planning Commission, or that's just something that would come back to you.
Well, I think we can probably spare the Planning Commission from hearing this again. I think the buck stops here. At least for me as one commissioner, I would recommend that my colleagues make a motion to continue for further study, if that would please the board.
Well, absolutely, but it's continue, not for further study, it's continue for, for me, it's continue for a new plan that does a better balancing of the density of units in order to conform with the state residential. And I will be honest, that's a, I'm willing to be open, but boy, oh, boy, that's a long way to go as far as I'm concerned. But I could, I could support that. I mean, listen, the last thing I ever want to do and tell a landowner is absolutely no, you can't. And hey, I want to give all the credit to the people in the room. I don't tell landowners, no, you can't, because your neighbors don't agree. I, sorry, that's just not me, okay? So, sure, bring me something better and bring us something better. Absolutely, I'm willing to take another look at it. But, boy, guys, this is, that'll be a long way to go for me. I mean, I just want to be honest with you guys. It's a long way to go.
Can I get some clarification?
Sure.
If the board is gonna make a motion, which it sounds like they're going to, I would like clarification on what you're expecting. As I presented, we believe we meet the criteria. We believe we meet the comp plan requirements. The comp plan encourages cluster development. There have been other developments with higher density in the same cluster with the same lot sizes in this part of the comprehensive master plan. So I'm trying to understand exactly what within this, we're one gross density, one unit per two and a half, we meet that. It's encouraged that we cluster it. The zoning resolution requires or expects flexibility in lot sizes, so I'm trying to understand exactly what you're asking for, because this plan, the highest priority was water. And where something needs to give, I hear what you're saying, and yet we meet the requirements and we're doing what the regulations say. So I'm trying to get clarification on that.
Right, and I appreciate that. So I would support a motion to continue to ensure that the application is completely consistent with the comprehensive master plan and to provide the applicant with a greater opportunity to communicate with neighbors and maybe establish some consensus around those issues. Not that it is required, but it might be beneficial to get a better sense of what community expectations might be. What I'm hearing, and I think what would be reflected in the legal criteria, is the density. Right now, the density, in my mind, even if clustered, and because it's clustered, does not really reflect the outcomes and desires of the comprehensive master plan based upon the current location of adjacent communities and their current characteristics. It just seems out of character with adjacent neighborhoods, specifically Tolman.
So if I could just clarify, a state residential is one for two and a half acres, and they meet that requirement. So they meet the requirement of the comprehensive master plan, and they meet the requirement of our regulations.
And that zoning has already been approved at that density.
Right, but we're at subdivision, and so I think what we're talking about is how you subdivide that, and even though that's, it meets a requirement, but that's based upon gross density. And I think what we heard from citizens is they felt like that was a bit of a bait and switch.
And can you match that to a criteria that therefore it doesn't meet?
Yeah, I mean, again, we-
Which one?
Well, it's, if you want to go back to the criteria, I want to say it's 402.01. Sorry, 403.01. Whether or not a particular application fits in with the objectives and policies of the master plan is within the discretion of this Board of County Commissioners. And in my discretion and based upon the input of the citizens I represent, I don't believe it fits.
Even though it meets the requirements?
I don't think it does, from a subdivision standpoint. I realize the specific math can be argued around, but I still don't think that it's conforming with the goals and objectives of the policies of the master plan in terms of conforming with the, and if you want to bring up, do you want to bring up the comprehensive master plan criteria that was reviewed? Is that in the application?
It is. And I'll also just mention, one other is in the design elements component, which is No, that's, where is it? Oh, it's the second one. 403.02, the design elements. One of those is lots are of an appropriate size and configuration for the site's characteristics and intended uses, and otherwise capable of meeting minimum zone district standards such as lot size setbacks and off-street parking. So I think subdivision does allow you some flex, yes, you can flex lot sizes, but, you know, there's also some discussion for the actual number of units that you get through subdivision is based on the land and other characteristics. So there is something in that as well.
I would agree with that. I mean, just to exaggerate the hypothetical, if we had units that were .01 of an acre, I mean, technically through clustering, you could make the math work, but that would be out of conformity with adjacent communities. So, again, under 40301 and 02, I don't think it fits today.
So if you're thinking about a continuance, do you want to ask the applicant if they would prefer a continuance or if they would be willing to accept that?
Sure. Would the applicant be willing to accept a continuance? Okay, thank you, Ms. Repella. So if there's no further discussion, I will accept a motion.
If I could just ask something, do we want to do the waivers first? Commissioner Teal said he would support the waivers. The Planning Commission supported the waivers. So could we get the motions from the county attorney's office for the waivers and then do the motion to continue?
Let's, let me save Chris some time. No. No, I'd rather, I'd rather have a plan in place in order to take the waivers under consideration, considering that a way to affect and seek, a way to pursue the solution that has been preferred to the applicant will be to affect the configuration of the eight plots. So, no, I don't care to consider waivers. If you guys want to, we can do that, but I don't care to consider those at this stage.
I would agree with that. We can take up the waivers once the item has been continued for the next appropriate hearing.
Then, what date should we continue this to, Mr. Attorney? Or maybe we should ask the applicant how long they need?
Applicant.
Can you give us a minute to confer on the timing?
Absolutely, please.
And I do want to put on the record that I know the community wants these to be one to one and a half acre lots. We're not going to get to that, but we will do what we can within the plan that we have and stay consistent with how it's laid out to try to increase more than just the half the lot sizes that we had mentioned.
May I make a statement to the applicant? I understand the constraints that you're going to deal with in order to keep the will serve from Parker Water for the water and the sewage. I have an idea what those constraints are. So I'm willing to extend a deal of grace in terms of working that out. So if you guys need some time to consider what the continuance should be, and, you know, I mean, be generous with what you need. Although I understand this is, at its heart, this is a business transaction, and, yes, time is money, everyone. So, I mean, I don't think there's a gross expectation for a long continuance, but, you know, take time to consider something realistic.
I just need to touch base with our engineers, because they're the ones who are going to have to analyze this. If I could have two minutes to confer.
Sure. We'll take a brief recess for about two minutes.
Thank you, Commissioners Brian Lence, L E N C E. I live in Littleton, but Roxborough Park is my life. This is, for us, quite an historic moment. This is 50 years in the making. Fifty years waiting for something to happen that corrects something that perhaps shouldn't have happened way back when. It's interesting, in 1998, the then Board of County Commissioners were listening to this issue and felt it had been dragging on for far too long. And that was 25 years ago. And it had been dragging on for 25 years. So the fact that we're here today is a testament, I think, to the persistence of Roxborough Park, but also the collaboration and efforts that we've had with the county and county staff, which I really appreciate. Janet Herman, who I met eight years ago, when this was assigned to me, when I became general manager at the foundation, we determined, let's get this done. And it's been on my desk for eight years, and an awful lot of effort has been put into that, including so many different entities that have helped us with this. I mean, I'm talking about surveys, title commitments, identification of land issues, encroachments, right-of-way issues. Drafting the actual easement agreement itself was a huge effort, and Ken Murphy has been fantastic in that regard. Matt and everybody else at engineering. The list is really long, and for me, it's an example of the collaboration between a private entity such as ourselves and the county to get something done and persist with that effort to where we are today. We actually had a couple of members show up earlier to kind of be witness to this moment. Unfortunately, they had to leave. But for me, I guess we've been waiting for 50 years. We could probably wait for three more hours to get this done. So really, what I wanted to say is a really heartfelt thank you to everyone involved, to the Commissioners, and, as I said, to county staff. We really appreciate it. It actually helps us now. It puts some element of control in our hands. And we do have a commitment, obviously, to maintain the road to certain standards. I learned a lot about pavement condition index, which I never knew before. And we're actually embarking on a $4.5 million road repaving project this summer to actually finish all the roads and streets within our community, including Roxborough Drive. So the easement itself will be a brand-new finished piece of asphalt, and we'll be very proud of that. So thank you very much.
Brian, thank you for that, and thank you for your leadership in Roxborough. Any questions for the applicant?
I have none.
No questions.
You know, and I hate to belabor it, but I guess I would like to get a better sense of the overall intent and purpose of the vacation, Brian, if you wanted to share a little bit more of that. Appreciate your comment that your life is Roxborough Park, so I want to take advantage of that historical knowledge.
Sure, yeah. Effectively, as matters stand, even though the road doesn't exist as a usable county road, it exists really on paper as a dotted line on a map. But because it's still unvacated by the county, it means that we don't have the full ability to restrict access to anybody coming into the foundation. That, for example, if somebody, you know, a biker wanted to come in, we couldn't actually stop them coming past our entry station and continuing on. Even though they would then be using our private roads, we don't have the ability to kind of restrict access. So by vacating DC-5, it brings control into our hands and gives us the option that we've never had to potentially install a gate, some sort of restrictive barrier to entry, something like that, because it would be a private community. Even if we wanted to go ahead and do that, there are certain procedures that we have to follow within the foundation as far as getting owner approval. We can't just put a gate in. The members actually get to vote on that. And it's not, you know, 100% of owners that would want a gate, but in our covenants, there's a requirement of 50.1% approval vote of all the members. So that is something that now the Board of Directors can consider taking to the community to see if they want to install some sort of restricted access. So effectively, it does give us, you know, a lot more control about who comes into the community and improves our kind of entry station protocol, line of questioning, why are you here, that kind of thing.
Thank you for that. So I was going to ask, I think you already have a security entrance at the front of Roxborough.
We have an entry station. We have two lanes. The right lane is for residents only, the left lane, guests, visitors, patrons of the golf course, contractors. Anybody that's not a member of the foundation is supposed to go through that left lane, but because it's ungated, quite often we'll have people blowing by in the right lane. We can't kind of get their credentials, the purpose of their visit, that kind of thing. So because there's two lanes there, and that left lane, the guard is kind of writing down the details of the vehicle wanting to get access. It might be a box van, for example, and that guard is completely blocked from anybody coming into that in that right lane. If we had, let's envisage potentially like a dual boom barrier system, on the right side, the resident lane, it could be automated license plate reader system whereby a resident comes in, they're in that right lane, a camera identifies their license plate, the boom barrier goes up, and the resident goes through. Anybody who does not have authorization to get into the community and does not come in the left lane, if they try that right lane, the boom barrier won't go up. So we can potentially prohibit or limit somebody getting in under false pretenses. And we have had kind of various security issues. We've had mailbox theft and other things that might have been prevented had we had that extra element of security. People with, non-members, still have to go in that left lane and check in with the guard, but there would potentially also be a barrier there because we have had people just blast by the security guard without giving their vehicle details and the purpose of their visit.
Well, I think that's helpful, and it sounds like emergency access will not be an issue there either.
Say again, I'm sorry.
Right, that's, oh, emergency access will not be...
Emergency access is built into the agreement. There's right of ingress and egress for all the emergency vehicles and emergency evacuation. Let's say there's people in the state park and they need to exit the state park through Roxborough. There is that, that's written into the agreement, that they have a right of ingress and egress for emergency purposes. But emergency vehicles, similarly, because our guard station is 24/7, there's always going to be somebody there to, you know, trigger that barrier in case of need.
So, and Mr. Lence, obviously, you have a golf course that is open to the public within Roxborough. So can you help us understand the, I guess, the cooperation and coordination between what you have as an amenity within your community that is relatively open to the public versus the gated access at the entrance?
It is, and it's always been a challenge to have a public golf course in the middle of a private community.
Right.
But the golf course itself is a member of the foundation.
Oh, okay.
So anybody coming in to play golf is actually an invitee of the golf course, so they would have automatic right of access. But they still check in in that non-member lane, and our procedure right now is to, you know, let them proceed straight onto the golf course. And yes, we do get some people coming in, say they're going to the golf course, but, you know, then they don't. And that's a really tricky one. We've looked into trying to get tee times of everybody, but it's a public restaurant as well, so you could just go to the golf course and come in and say, I'm going to eat at the restaurant. So I think that that challenge will always be there, but it, by this vacation, it significantly improves our ability to restrict other unauthorized access.
Great. And I guess my final question is, do you accept the three conditions as presented?
Say again, I'm sorry.
Do you, I'm sorry, do you have the, do you accept the three conditions as presented from staff?
Yes, I do.
You do? Okay, great. Great. So thank you for that. I'll bring it back to the Board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
I have a motion to approve the acceptance of access easement over Roxborough Drive, Douglas County Project Number DV 2023-075.
Second.
There's a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries. We have a companion motion on the same...
And if it please the Board, Mr. Chair, I do have a motion to approve a resolution vacating a portion of Douglas County Road Number 5, located in Sections 11, 12, 14, and 23, Township 7 South Ranch, 69 West of the 6 PM, Primaridian, Douglas County, Colorado, because it does meet all the approval criteria with three conditions as presented. Project file is SB 2023-007.
Second.
So we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Lence.
Thank you.
Yep, best to Roxborough. So with that, we will move on to Item D, which is subdivision improvements agreement, intergovernmental agreement between the BAC Ts at Castle Pines Village LLC, whose address is 975 North Lincoln Street, Unit 204, Denver, Colorado 80203, and the Castle Pines Metropolitan District, whose address is 5880 Country Club Drive, Castle Rock, Colorado 80108, and the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County Project Number DV 2022-351. Al Peterson, engineer, presenting for staff.
If I could just make a statement, we've got lots, we've got a few people here, and we're only, like, on our third item, so if we could do things to maybe make things go a little quicker, I think a lot of people would appreciate that.
Sure.
Thank you.
And I'll go do a shortened version on this. Items 2D and 2E are also being presented together. Item 2E is the Castle Pines Village filing 44A, Second Amendment Minor Development. And then Item 2D is the Subdivision Improvements Agreement, IGA, that's associated with the application. The request is approval of a minor development plat to subdivide 1.65 acre parcel into two single-family residential lots and one tract. The item was heard at the Planning Commission on April 3, 2023. No members of the public spoke, and Planning Commission recommended approval by a vote of six to zero. This is the exhibit showing the two lots and one tract. And then staff has evaluated the minor development in accordance with Article 6 of the subdivision resolution. Should the Board find that the approval standards for the minor development are met, the following proposed conditions should be considered for inclusion in its motion. Condition number one, prior to approval of the minor development final plat, the associated SIA IGA for the subdivision shall be approved by the Board. Condition number two, prior to recordation of the minor development final plat, the Castle Pines Metropolitan District sanitary easement shall be recorded by separate instrument and noted on the plat exhibit. Condition number three, prior to issuance of the first building permit within Castle Pines filing 44A, Second Amendment, the applicant shall submit the recommendations of the Wildland Fire Mitigation Plan to the specifications of the Douglas County Wildfire Mitigation Specialist. Condition number four, during construction activity within the development, the applicant and successors and assigns shall take all reasonable care to watch for historic resources, paleontological resources, and other cultural history resources, shall immediately notify Douglas County in the event of such discovery. Condition number five, during construction activity within the development, the applicant and successors and assigns shall conduct a burrowing owl study. If any earth moving will take place between March 15 and October 31. Condition number six, prior to recordation of the minor development final plat, technical corrections to the plat exhibit shall be made to the satisfaction of Douglas County. And condition number seven, all commitments and promises made by the applicant or the applicant's representative during the public hearing and/or agreed to in writing and included in the public record have been relied upon by the Board of County Commissioners in approving the application. Therefore, such approval is conditioned upon the applicant's full satisfaction of all such commitments and promises. This concludes the presentation on the final plat for Castle Pines 44A, Second Amendment. Two motions are necessary from the Board. The first motion would be made for the SIA IGA, following a second motion on the minor development final plat.
Great, so we can move this along by taking both of those at the same time here? Are there any questions for staff?
I have none, thank you.
No questions.
And I have none either. Would the applicant like to make any comments? Okay, any questions for the applicant?
I have none.
Okay.
No questions.
And none for me either. With that, I'll open it up for citizen comment. Is there any citizen comment on the room with regard to Items 3D and 3E? I'm sorry, 2E and 2D. Any citizen comment? Troy, is there any citizen comment online?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Okay, with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the Board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
I have a motion to approve the subdivision improvements agreement, intergovernmental agreement between the BAC Ts at Castle Pines Village LLC, whose address is 975 North Lincoln Street, Union, sorry, Unit 204, Denver, Colorado 80203, and the Castle Pines Metropolitan District, whose address is 8550, I'm sorry, 8580 Country Club Drive, Castle Rock, Colorado 80108, and the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County Project Number DV 2022-351.
Second.
So there's a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries 3-0. Before we move to Item E and taking a motion on that, let me just ask the applicant if the applicant would accept the seven conditions as presented?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you very much. I will accept the motion.
If it please the Board, I do have a motion to approve the Castle Pines Village filing Number 44A, Second Amendment Minor Development, because it does meet all of the approval criteria with seven conditions as presented and agreed to. Project file SB 2022-033.
Second.
So there's a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries 3-0. With that, we will move on to Item F, which is the Cross Creek Preliminary Plan, project file SB 2022-028. Carolyn Washi-Freeland, Senior Planner, presenting for staff. Hi, Carolyn.
That's not it. That's the applicant's. Okay, where's the regular folder? Cross Creek. Find it. No. How do we get to the drive where we have to load them?
While we're getting set up here, in the interest of respecting the time of those who've appeared before us tonight, let me just ask by a show of hands, how many are here for the Cross Creek application? If you can raise your hands. Okay, how many are here for the 6835 South County Highway 67? Thanks. And then who's here for the pinery plan development?
No, that's not it.
Pinery plan development, and then anybody else for the resolution supplementing the budget?
Down here.
Okay.
It's down further. Yeah.
And we are prepared to do expedited presentations, and the applicants won't do a presentation unless you want me to.
Please, I think we'd appreciate an expedited presentation.
Carolyn Washi-Freeland, representing Planning Services. The item before you today is the Cross Creek Preliminary Plan. The project number is SB 2022-028. Mike Sanders and Karen Henry are here as the applicants. The applicant is requesting approval of a preliminary plan to subdivide a 28.99 acre site into 102 single-family residential lots and 10 tracts. Lots will range in size from 5,400 square feet up to 11,000 square feet. Approximately 10 acres of parks, open space, and trail connection are proposed with the This is the intent of the preliminary plan from the subdivision Article IV. The preliminary plan process, the applicant submits an application, there's a referral agency review period, planning commission hearing, and the Board of County Commissioners hearing. During the process, no public comments were received. Referral comments have been addressed and are included in the staff report. The Planning Commission heard the proposal at a public hearing on March 20, 2023, and unanimously recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. No members of the public spoke in response to the application. This is a vicinity map of the site. It's located in the northeastern part of the county, and it's just west of Highway 83 on Scott Avenue. The site is located here in red, and it is located approximately one half mile west of Highway 83. The parcel is zone plan development, and it is situated within the pinery SUA. PD zoning abuts the site to the northeast and south, and to the west is a conservation This is an aerial view of the site. This is some background that is discussed in the staff report for the site in terms of zoning. Here is the exhibit with the subdivision layout. There'll be two access points from Scott Avenue, and the lots will be taking in access from four interior public streets. This is a view of Scott Avenue from the main entrance to the site, and it's on the southern This view is looking east from the property line onto the Cherry Creek floodplain. This view is looking west from inside the property towards the Cherry Creek Regional Trail area, which is further west. This view is looking north from the property line, and Scott Gulch is located to the west, and Cherry Creek is north of the site. The approval standards for a preliminary plan request are set forth in Section 403 of the subdivision resolution and listed on this slide. Staff's assessment of the approval standards are discussed in detail in the staff report. The Pinery Water and Waste Water District has included the parcel in its district as of April 17. Per proposed condition number one, court-ordered inclusion must occur prior to the Board's action on the final plat application. Staff has evaluated the preliminary plan in accordance with Article IV of the Douglas County subdivision resolution. Should the Board find that the approval standards for the preliminary plan are met, the following proposed conditions should be considered for inclusion in the motion. Condition number one, prior to the Board's action on the final plat request, the subdivision shall be formally included within the Pinery Water and Waste Water District by district court action. Condition two, prior to recordation of the final plat, the applicant shall provide evidence that all off-site access, drainage, and pinery water easements have been recorded. Condition number three, prior to recordation of the final plat, a homeowners association and/or metropolitan district shall be formally established to accept tracts and various improvements for ownership and maintenance purposes. Condition number four, prior to recordation of the final plat, any required cash-in-lieu park land dedication fees shall be paid. Condition number five, prior to recordation of the final plat, the applicant shall provide a financial contribution of $1,000 per lot to Douglas County Parks and Trails to further enable trail connectivity in the area, which may include feasibility analysis, design, construction, and other regional improvements. Condition number six, the required prorata contribution to the traffic signal at the intersection of Scott Avenue and State Highway 83 shall be secured through a subdivision improvement agreement. Condition number seven, prior to the issuance of the first residential building permit within the subdivision, cash-in-lieu of school and education shall be paid to Douglas County School District. Condition number eight, voluntary school capital mitigation fees in the amount of $2,730 per dwelling unit shall be paid to Douglas County School District at the time of building permit issuance. Condition number nine, during construction activity within the development, the applicant and successors and assigns shall take all reasonable care to watch for historic resources, paleontological resources, and other cultural history resources, and shall immediately notify Douglas County and complete appropriate Colorado Office of Archaeology and Historic Preservation Data Management forms in the event of such discovery. Condition number 10, during construction activity within the development, the applicant and successors and assigns, sorry, tongue twister.
Lot words.
Shall conduct a burrowing owl study. If any earth moving will take place between March 15 and October 31. Condition 11, technical corrections to the record copy of the preliminary plan exhibit shall be made to the satisfaction of Douglas County. Condition number 12, all commitments and promises made by the applicant or the applicant's representative during the public hearing and/or agreed to in writing and included in the public records shall have been relied upon by the Board of County Commissioners in approving the application. Therefore, such approval is conditioned upon the applicant's full satisfaction of all such commitments and promises. Section 405.06 of the subdivision resolution sets forth the parameters of the Board's action on a preliminary plan request as noted in this slide. This concludes staff's presentation, and I'm available for questions regarding the staff report. Otherwise, Mike Sanders and Karen Henry are here as applicants.
Great, thank you, Carolyn. Any questions for staff?
I have none.
No questions.
Let me just ask if the applicant will accept the seven conditions as presented? Great, would you like to make a presentation at all?
No, sir, the petition, 12 conditions.
Oh, I'm sorry, 12 conditions as presented. Yeah, I'm confusing that with another application. Thank you, the 12 you accept. Okay, and if you want to just identify for the record your name and where you're from?
My name is Michael Sanders, 5989.
I'm going to ask you to approach the mic, if you would. Sorry about that.
My name is Michael Sanders, 5989, Interlocken Street, Parker, Colorado, and we do accept the conditions shown by staff. I believe there's 12 of them.
Perfect, thank you, sir, and I appreciate your patience with our long meeting tonight.
I do have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
So when I was reading the packet...
Yes, ma'am.
It talks about an off-site detention of water quality plan that's going to be on property that is not owned by you, but it's going to be controlled by the HOA. Am I reading this correctly?
Yes, ma'am.
And so is that because you only have 29 acres, so it's not enough? It doesn't work on that property, so your neighbors have agreed to do that for you?
Well, what happened was the property owners that we're buying the property from had a larger piece of property, and this piece of property was kind of landlocked from their development parcel, so we were able to utilize that, and it's downstream, so it works from a drainage standpoint. And that's why we put the detention pond there. And we've provided an easement to the county and the county attorney, and they've approved the form of the easement.
Okay, great. I've just never seen that before, so I just wanted to ask the question. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Any additional questions for the applicant?
No, sir.
And I have none either. So with that, we'll open it up for any citizen comment. Is there any citizen comment in the room? Okay, seeing none, is there any citizen comment online?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Okay, thank you, Troy. And with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the Board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
I have a motion to approve Cross Creek Preliminary Plan because it does meet all of the approval criteria with 12 conditions as presented. Project file SB 2022-028.
Second.
So there's a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries 3-0. Congratulations. So with that, we will move to Item F, I'm sorry, Item G, which is 6835 South County Highway 67, Swayback Ranch Fishing Club, project file US 2022-001. Once again, Mike Basika, presenting for staff.
If I could ask a quick question of the county attorney. Mr. Garcia, my records, my notes show that there's two motions needed for this item, but I only see one on the agenda, one on the motion log. I think we're supposed to do one for a water appeal? So can you pencil that out for us or something while we're hearing this? Thank you.
Mike?
Thank you, Commissioners. Mike Basika, representing Planning Services. And there are two requests before you with this application, as was just recently discussed, a water appeal from Section 1804A and 1806A of the zoning resolution, and the USR request for the addition of a new cabin. The water appeal must be voted on first, followed by the USR. The water appeal must be voted on first, followed by the USR. This shows the USR intent in Section 21, and this is the review process, which had a 21-day, included a 21-day referral period. There were no significant referral comments received. Those that were will be addressed at time of building permit. Planning Commission heard this after April 3rd, 2023 PC hearing. They recommended unanimous approval of both the water appeal and the USR request at that hearing, and no one from the public spoke for or against. Quick look at a couple of maps here. We're down in the far southwest corner of the county along the South Platte River and County Highway 67. And here is the zoning. The property is zone day one. And again, South Platte River on the west side. And there's a closer look at the aerial view of the property. Little bit of background, the fishing club has been in existence since 1928 and has seen 22 cabins added since that time, and this will be the most recent addition. Some of those cabins also have sister-in-studied provided water. This is page two of the exhibit in your packet, just showing the private drive and the location of the new cabin, and also a relation to County Highway 67. And the water appeal, which was reviewed by our water consultant and found to be acceptable, and they had four items from their review they wanted added to the USR management plan. Those items have been added to the management plan and are included in your packet. Just look at a couple pictures. This is from Highway 67, looking off to the southeast or southwest. And this is a photo from 67 looking due west at the general location of the new cabin. And this slide shows the water appeal criteria for you to make your decision. This slide lists the USR approval standards. And again, there are two separate motions, the water appeal first, followed by the USR And there are two conditions of approval. Should the board find that the USR approval standards have been met, the following proposed conditions should be considered for inclusion in the motion for the use by special review. Condition one, prior to final approval of the record copy of the USR plan exhibit, any necessary technical corrections shall be made to the satisfaction of Douglas County. Condition two, all commitments and promises made by the applicant or the applicant's representative during the public hearing and/or agreed to in writing and included in the public record have been relied upon by the Board of County Commissioners in approving the application. Therefore, such approval is conditioned upon the applicant's full satisfaction of all such commitments and promises. This slide just shows the board's determination for action on this, on the USR. And that concludes my presentation. Kevin Archer is here, along with Mr. Roosevelt, the fishing club member, if you have any questions for them. Otherwise, I'm open to take questions at this time.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Any questions for staff?
I have none.
Is for the appeal, is there a separate project file number, or is it still under this?
It's under this application.
It's under this application. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, and I have no other questions. Would the applicant like to make any comments? Nope. Okay, any questions for the applicant?
Agreement with conditions.
Does the applicant, if you want to just identify yourself and where you're from? And Mike, how many conditions do we have?
Two.
Just the two, right?
Yes.
Kevin Archer, 105 Wilcox, A-R-C-H-E-R. We agree with the two conditions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Archer.
Thank you.
So with that, let me open it up for any citizen comment. Is there any citizen comment in the room with regard to this item? Seeing none, is there any online comment?
I have no online comment.
Okay, thank you, Troy. And with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring you back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
Well, first of all, this is really cool. If with the forbearance of the board, I'm willing to make a stab at the motion for the appeal.
Please.
Okay, if it pleases the board, I do have a motion to approve the appeal for 6835 South County Highway 67 because it does meet the approval criteria under Section 1808A- or period 07 of the Douglas County zoning resolution. And then if I need to reference a project file, project file will be US 2022-001. What do you think, Counselor? Does that sound sufficient? What do you think?
Okay, I'll second that. I thought the project file says it's 1804A and 1806A.
It is 1804A as to the type of water supply, 1806A as to the associated documentation.
Okay, I'll second those.
So there's a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries 3-0.
And I have a motion to approve the use by special review for 6835 South County Road 65 because it does meet all of the approval criteria with two conditions as presented, project file US 2022-001.
Did you say Highway 65?
67, I'm sorry.
67, you bet.
And I will second.
So there's a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries. So with that, we will move on to item I, which is the Pinery Plan Development 30th Amendment, project file ZR 2023-001.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Heather Scott, representing planning staff. This request is a major plan development amendment for the pinery PD, project number ZR 2023-001. Dr. Kelly Tischer from Single Tree Equestrian LLC is here on behalf of the owners. The request is a major plan development to amend the pinery plan development and shift veterinary use from an accessory use to allowing veterinary clinics and hospitals as a permitted use by right in Planning Area 62. The intent of the major PD amendment process is on this slide. The process begins with the middle of an application. It goes out on referral, and then goes before the planning commission, and ultimately the board. Comments were received from one HOA and one neighbor who wrote in support. Comments are included in your staff report. On April 25th, at a public hearing, the planning commission recommended approval by a vote of six to zero. Three members of the public spoke in favor of this application. The area is the Colorado Horse property. It's located in the east side of the county. The property is zone plan development. And here is a blow-up. As seen on the aerial, the site is fully developed, and the veterinary clinic and hospital will move into the existing administration and stables building. The original pinery PD was approved in 1974 and has been amended 29 times prior to this. This amendment, as stated before, allow a veterinary clinic and hospital in Planning Area 62 as a use permitted by right rather than accessory use. Before you is the pinery plan development map, and Area 62 is highlighted in red. Here are several site photos taken around the site. Section 1522.08 sets forth parameters for the board's recommendation of a major amendment request. The approval standards for a major PD amendment request are set forth in Section 15 and listed on this slide. Staff's assessment of the approval standards are discussed in detail on pages seven and eight of the staff report. Staff has evaluated the major plan development amendment request in accordance with Section 15 of the zoning resolution. Should the Board of County Commissioners find that the approval standards have been met, staff proposes that the following condition may be included in the motion. Condition number one, prior to recordation, all technical corrections will be made to the plan development document to the satisfaction of Douglas County. This concludes staff's presentation. I am available to answer any questions. Otherwise, Dr. Tischer is here as one of the property owners.
Great, okay. Great, thank you very much. Any questions for staff?
I have none.
No questions.
And I have none either. Mr. Tischer? Dr. Tischer? You worked too hard to get that doctorate, so we won't call you mister.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. Appreciate it. I'll try to be brief in instance of time this evening. In 1950, the Littleton Large Animal Clinic was formed near the old Centennial Racetrack, and that home of a garage at a little office was great for 25 years. During that process, three gentlemen, Doctors Beeman, Swanson, and Vale, took it to the next level and ultimately moved that practice to our current home on South Santa Fe in Arapahoe County, where we've been for the last 45 years. And we're looking for our new home, and we had the opportunity, a group of us, to purchase the Colorado Horse Park, or the lion's share of that Colorado Horse Park, with the idea of keeping the horse shows and the commitment to the rural heritage of Douglas County as part of that commitment, and we were looking for our next 45 to 65-year home or more as part of that community. We are, the owners, ownership used to be a group of out-of-state owners, and we're excited. We are all local community members of Colorado, mostly in Douglas County. I'm sure there was more I was going to say, but I am happy to take any questions. Just want to let you all know, we're super excited to come to Douglas County. We are happy to serve our resident horses in a closer proximity and to our referring veterinarians, and to really help continue the reputation of the clinic that we've been fortunate enough to be a section of caretakers for, for the long-term future. So thank you very much for your time and efforts, and I just wanted to say thank you to the staff, too. They've been super wonderful to work for and have helped us out all along the way, so thank you.
Great, thank you, Dr. Tischer. And do you accept the two conditions as presented?
I think there's one.
Is it two?
Totally accept that.
Okay, great. Any questions for the applicant?
Actually, not a question. I remembered when you came and talked to us about wanting to come to Douglas County, and years ago, I used to use Littleton Large Animal with our horses, so it's a great legacy, so welcome to Douglas County.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant?
No questions.
Okay, and I have none either. With that, I'll open it up for any citizen comment. Is there any citizen comment? Yes, sir. If you want to just state your name and where you're from for the record?
My name is Sheldon Irish, I-R-I-S-H. I'm a homeowner in the Timbers community that is surrounding the horse park. I've been there for 19 years. This is our third ownership group that we've had a relationship with. I personally met with Dr. Tischer and some of his staff about their expectations with the horse park, and we couldn't be more delighted. We think that what he's doing at the hospital, we really want you to approve his major rezone effort, and that's just not me, that's other homeowners that surround the horse park. Thank you.
Great, thank you for joining us tonight. Any other citizen comment? Okay, is there any citizen comment online?
I have no online comment.
Okay, thank you, Troy. With that, I'll close citizen comment and bring you back to the board for any further discussion or a motion.
Well, Dr. Tischer, I'm really glad that you had Kim Harburg, the venerable Kim Harburg, call up and reach out. We had a chance to have a lunch that snowy day last year, and I'm just pleased as punch. Thank you for, thank you for taking on the challenge and working with our team to get this done right. Welcome to Douglas County. Do invite us over sometime. If it pleases the board, I do have a motion to approve the Pinery Plan Development 30th Amendment because it does meet all the approval criteria with one condition as presented. Project file is ZR 2023-001.
So we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries 3-0. Congratulations. Great. So with that, we will move to our final item, and just acknowledgement to our board for their, the patience and the hard work today. Appreciate both of you and your consistency with us today. Our last item is a Item J, Resolution Supplementing the 2023 Adopted Budget to Appropriate Unanticipated Revenues and Appropriate Restricted Committed Assigned and Unassigned Fund Balances in the Amount of $22,764,471. Kim Hirsch, Budget Manager, presenting for staff.
Good evening, Commissioners. For brevity's sake, I do have a expanded presentation, but I'm just going to go through really quickly so that all of us can get out of here. The supplemental request before you is governed by Statute 29-1-109 that allows for the Board of County Commissioners to make revised appropriation resolutions that will reflect the increase in the expenditures at this time. The second supplemental for fiscal year '23 is before you today, and it is a total of The supplemental request will be increasing appropriations for the new revenues that have been received since the formal budget adoption, allow for unspent project dollars to be carried forward into the current fiscal year, and appropriate fund balance for new initiatives that have arisen since January 1st. The total, again, before you today is $22,764,471. The new amended budget for Douglas County at this time will be $616,884,659. With that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to go through anything in the fund, but all the documentation was in the board's packet.
Thank you, Kim. Any questions for staff?
I have no questions, and thank you for always doing a good job taking care of all those really big numbers.
Thank you.
Any additional questions for staff?
No questions. Appreciate it, Kim.
And none for me either. So with that, I'll open it up for any citizen comment on this final item today. Is there any citizen comment on this item? Troy, is there any citizen comment online?
I have no online comment, sir.
Okay, with that, I will close citizen comment and bring you back to the board for any further discussion or a motion.
I have a motion to approve a resolution supplementing the 2023 adopted budget to appropriate unanticipated revenues and appropriate restricted, committed, assigned, and unassigned fund balances in the amount of $22,764,471.
Second.
So we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries. Congratulations, everyone, on getting through today. The next land use meeting and public hearing will be held on Tuesday, May 9th, 2023, at 2:30 PM. We are adjourned.